We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of March 10, 2020 is now called to order. The time is 6:02 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of the board meeting, we have been enjoying the Veterans Park Academy for the Arts Theater Department and Cub Choir. Each year, the theater department produces a spring musical, and this year's musical is the Addams Family Youth at Part. The show is about Wednesday Addams, the daughter of Gomez and Morticia Addams, who has turned 18 and fallen in love with a normal boy, and now wants to be normal. The show dates on March 27 at 7:00 PM and March 28 at 2:00 PM at East Lee County High School, and tickets can be purchased online or at the door. Tonight, they performed When You're an Addams and Full Disclosure under the direction of Casey Davis, middle school theater director. The Cub Choir is comprised of 4th and 5th grade students. The students are not auditioned, however, must regularly attend weekly Wednesday rehearsals from 6:50 AM to 7:40 AM. The students performing this evening have been in the Cub Choir since September. They performed at the Veterans Park Academy for the Arts, Veterans Day Recognition, and the Southwest Florida International Airport's Sound of the Season. This evening, they performed Everyone Belongs and will now perform Million Dreams under the direction of elementary music teacher Dave Norris. Thank you very much, Cubs.
Great job.
Could I have gotten a copy of that?
What's that?
Could I have gotten a copy of that?
At this time, we'll take a brief pause to clear the performance area. You guys did a great job. Thank you so much.
Over here. You're at Dunbar? Paul Lawrence Dunbar?
Yes.
To come up and sit closer. At this time, I will introduce our student representative for this evening. Please welcome Chris Walsh from the School Board Student Advisory Committee. Chris is a 13-year-old 8th grader at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. He was in the Junior National Honor Society in elementary school and currently enjoys being a member of the Student Advisory Committee, where he participates enthusiastically. Chris also enjoys reading and swimming and would like to be a pilot one day. He has been in junior youth in government for two years, so he has experienced debating and the use of proper decorum. Welcome, Chris. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, one acknowledgement, one reading of resolution, six recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include three items under executive services, two items under academic services, nine items under business services, two items under human resources, 10 items under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to approve, to adopt the agenda?
It's moved.
Moved by Mrs. Giovanni and seconded by Mrs. Gittens. Please record your vote. This evening, Mrs. Gittens will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Vaughn will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise for the invocation.
Father God, tonight, we heard songs of peace, of love, of acceptance for our world, for our children's world. I will follow their prayer for a better and a peaceful world. Lord, let us listen and learn from the children for the world that they're going to make. Lord, help us as adults to further, not hamper their dreams. We pray for safety in this time of uncertainty, protection, and healing when necessary. Finally, help us to think first of others, less of ourselves, and be forever mindful of peace, understanding, and love for our world. Amen.
Amen.
Please welcome Staff Sergeant Mark Flaherty, Army Instructor for the Island Coast High School JROTC Program. Staff Sergeant Flaherty retired from the Army after 15 years of active-duty service and is a veteran of Operation New Dawn, Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation Enduring Freedom, and served in both Iraq and Afghanistan. This is Staff Sergeant Flaherty's first year as a JROTC instructor in the district. And thank you, Staff Sergeant, for your service.
Cadet Ryan Logan is currently the president of the board and was the Gator Battalion commander. Ryan has participated for the last four years in the ROTC program, has attended many parades, community service projects, service learning activities, and leadership camps. Cadet Logan has shown outstanding leadership in the ROTC program by participating in teams such as Raider, Drill, Rifle, Color Guard, and the Junior Leadership Academic Bowl. Cadet Logan has been involved in student government, key club, and numerous varsity sports while at Island Coast. He holds a 5.4 GPA and has accepted his appointment to the United States Military Academy at West Point. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. At this time, our student representative, Chris Walsh, will present the character education word and design for March, as well as read the resolution for Irish-American Heritage Month.
Hello. As you know, I am Chris Walsh. Today, I'm going to be reading the character word for March. The character word for March is courage, the personal strength to face difficulties, obstacles, and challenges, having the determination to do the right thing even when others don't. I quote, "Courage is resistance to fear, mastery of fear, not absence of fear," Murph Twain. The design you see displayed on the screen was created by Gracie Gold, a 10th grade student at Astero High School. Here is the resolution from last meeting. Whereas Congress passed Public Law 101418 in 1991 establishing March as Irish-American Heritage Month, and whereas within the authority of the executive branch, the President of the United States has issued a proclamation each year since 1991, and whereas we recognize the many Americans of Irish-American descent who have made outstanding contributions to the forming of our nation, and whereas the rich cultural traditions of the Irish-American community have made a remarkable impact on American society, and whereas the strong backgrounds of Irish-Americans and their dedication to hard work and family have become an integral part of America, whereas Irish-Americans have engaged in the American experience in robust and meaningful ways, whereas a deep commitment to faith and a desire to contribute to the American dream, these citizens are realizing the full blessings of liberty. Now therefore, may it be resolved that the School Board of Lee County, Florida hereby proclaims the 31-day period of March 31, 2020, as National Irish-American Heritage Month, adopted at a regular meeting of the School Board of Lee County, Florida, this 25th day, this last 25th day of February 2020. Thank you.
Before we move on to our recognitions, I'd like to say that in the spirit of cooperation with the Department of Health and the CDC, we will not have handshaking. We can do an elbow bump or other gesture.
Can we do chest bumps? Kidding, kidding, kidding.
Tempted right now to ask if we could do some elbows, but I won't. Well, my granddaughter said that a more fun thing to do is the butt bump, so. Okay, so at this time, board members will, and superintendent will gather in the front. And Chris, come with us. I'd like to invite Dr. Nathan Shaker, Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School, and teacher Ms. Holly Rose to join me at the lectern. I left out a word, principal. Sponsored by the Florida Commission on the Status of Women, the Florida Women's History Contest is open to both boys and girls and serves to celebrate women's history and to increase awareness of the contributions made by Florida women, past and present. Celebrating women's history presents the opportunity to honor and recount stories of our ancestors, talents, sacrifices, and commitments, and inspires today's generation. This year's theme focused on the women's suffrage movement and the importance of voting. At this time, we'd like to recognize the following statewide winners. And I understand that the first winner, Meadow Stanley, could not be here tonight.
It's Meadow Stanley.
Oh, she did come. Okay. So would these students please join us here? Glad you could make it, Meadow. And we're going to do a group picture. Meadow Stanley, she won first place for 8th grade. John C. Parsa, second. We're going to do a group picture, so we're going to do it all at once. John C. Parsa, she won second place for 8th grade. Zaya Chambers, she won first place for 6th grade. And Peyton Sidwell, who won second place for 6th grade. The school board and superintendent are pleased to congratulate these students and to thank Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for supporting this important project. And so Meadow, and you can, as you get your certificates, you can go up there for the group picture. Would you like that? John C., did I say that right?
Yes.
John C.
I have it.
Yeah, I know. And so Peyton, can I take that?
And actually, the kids are doing the low tone.
Oh.
Well, what, low tone?
Yeah.
See, we're a sand.
Oh, well, here. Whatever.
I would like to invite Ms. Angela Rolls, Principal of Cypress Lake High School, and Ms. Debbie Diggs, Principal of Norfolk Myers High School, to come forward. I would also like to ask Mr. Todd Duzenberry, teacher and Special Olympics Coordinator to Cypress Lake High School, and Ms. Beth Beller, teacher and Special Olympics Coordinator for Norfolk Myers High School, as well. Mr. Donald Payne, Special Olympics Coordinator from Lee County Parks and Recreation, to join us at the lectern. Special Olympics Unified Champion School has an inclusive school climate, one that exhibits a sense of collaboration, engagement, and respect for all. A unified champion school receiving national banner recognition is one that has demonstrated commitment to inclusion by meeting 10 national standards of excellence. These standards were developed by a national panel of leaders from the Special Olympics and education community. The primary activities within these standards include Special Olympics Unified Sports, Inclusive Inclusive Youth Leadership, and Whole School Engagement. Banner Unified Champion Schools are also able to demonstrate these, that they are self-sustainable and have a plan in place to support these activities into the future. Cypress Lake High School and Norfolk Myers High School have both been chosen as 2018 and 19 National Banner Unified Champion Schools through the Special Olympics. There are only 24 schools in Florida and 173 in the United States who has achieved that status. The School Board and the Superintendent are pleased to congratulate both high schools for these outstanding achievements. All right, here, wait. Cypress?
Bring our kids up.
Sure. Yeah, bring the kids. This is what it's all about. Absolutely. Congratulations. Good job. Impressive. Thank you. All right, Ms. Diggs, stand. I would also like to ask Ms. Diggs, Principal of Norfolk Myers High School, to return to the lectern, and Ms. Beth Beller, Norfolk Myers Special Olympics Coordinator and Coach, to join us. I would also like to ask the following students from Norfolk Myers High School to join us at the lectern. Justin Borrego, John Hassel, Brandon Lloyd, Jake Emmetinucci, and Stephen Garcia. On November 7th, 2019, the Norfolk Myers High School Unified Bowling Team won the FSAA State Championship in Orlando, Florida. Not only is this North's first-ever FSAA Team State Championship in 59 years, this was also FSA's A's first Unified Bowling State Competition. North will now forever be known as the inaugural state champion. The School Board and the Superintendent are pleased to recognize these fine athletes for their state championship win, along with the coach, and for their commitment and determination and hard work that led to this outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. Impressive. We all bow like it. Some good scores, Sam, high scores.
Okay. I would like to ask Dr. Doug Santini, Executive Director of the Fine and Performing Arts, to join me at the lectern. Yes, do it. We got this down now. Okay, the Florida Dance Education Organization State Performance Assessment was held February 1st, 2020, in Tampa, Florida. Middle and high school students from Lee County School Districts attended and earned all-state recognition and awards in various areas. Special studies must be learned and performed by dancers, who are assigned by college professors in technical proficiencies, movement, mastery, and assembly performance. The School Board and Superintendent are pleased to recognize the student and staff. At this time, I would like the dancers from Norfolk Myers Academy for the Arts, Principal Dr. Thomas Millens, and Teachers Ms. Lori Maddel, and I apologize if I mispronounce it, and Ms. Nicole Humberling, to come forward. Okay. Next we have, may I have the dancers from Cypress Lake High School Center for the Arts, Principal Ms. Elangela Rolls, Teacher Ms. Patty Gere, and Ms. Nancy Burham, please come forward. Okay, that's two down, 15 to go. No, just kidding. Kidding. Finally, the dancers from Lehigh Senior High School, Principal Mrs. Jackie Corey, and Teacher Ms. Lauren Gomez, please come forward. Also, I have to pause here. Ms. Gomez, I understand one of your dancers also received a special recognition at this event. Will your student Dion Walker please step forward when he gets up here? We want to recognize him. Okay. Unfortunately, Dion is not here with us, but we still want to recognize him. Each year, the Florida Dance Education Organization awards scholarships to dancers who are members of the National Honor Society for Dance Arts. The Florida Merit Scholarship is awarded to dancers who excel in performance, academia, and personal leadership. This year, after a lengthy application process, Dion Walker was awarded this year's Florida Merit Scholarship. So congratulations to Dion.
I would like to invite Ms. Angela Rolls, Principal Cypress Lake High School, to join me at the lectern again. Distinguished Young Women, formerly known as America's Junior Miss, was founded in 1958 to reward the accomplishments of high school senior girls seeking to pursue higher education. This program is the largest and oldest scholarship program of its kind and has impacted over 800,000 high school girls. The award is based on scholastic achievement, interview skills, public speaking, talent, and fitness. Girls attend workshops, do service projects, and learn to be the best version of themselves. The program takes place in all 50 states and Washington, DC, with some states having local programs as well. At this time, I assume you are Sidney Hudson, and you are joining us, very good. Sidney has been selected as the Distinguished Young Woman of Fort Myers for 2020. Her achievements include A.B. Honor Roll three years, Crops and Scholars Inductee, High Brass Section Leader, and First Chair Euphonium. In addition, some of Sidney's activities include marching band, concert band, choir, basketball, Cypress Lake Cabaret Individual and Group Music Performance, Church Musician, and Church Homeless Ministry. The School Board and Superintendent are pleased to congratulate Sidney Hudson for this outstanding accomplishment.
I would like to ask Ms. Beverly Burke from the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, and Ms. Brenda Streblo, Secretary Treasurer from Voice of the Constitution Cape 912, Inc., to please join me.
Hello, ladies.
Hi.
The Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, Voice of the Constitution Cape 912, Inc., and the Lee County School District have partnered to support the teaching of the Constitution each year. Through their generosity, Cape 912 and private donors provided student constitutions free to all 7th grade civics teachers to support classroom instruction in civics, history, and social studies classes. Students in these classes participated in an essay competition based upon questions from information found in the United States Constitution. Each participating middle school selected their best essay to submit to the Foundation and Cape 912, Inc., for the Constitution. I'm sorry, for the competition. At this time, I would like to invite the following people to join us. From Challenger Middle School, Mr. Dana Berry. That is the first time I can say principal after your name. Ms. Brandy Redding, civics teacher and student Maria Bankhatter. From Lexington Middle School, Ms. Kristen Bueno, principal. Ms. Cindy Volpe, civics teacher and student Tasnia Hossein. From Three Oaks Middle School, Mr. Rick Barda, Assistant Principal, Mrs. Cynthia Restino, civics teacher and student Nicole Jagarova. Ms. Brenda, how do I say your last name?
Streblo.
Streblo. Ms. Brenda Streblo will announce the authors of the essays selected as third place, second place, and the first place 2020 Constitution Essay Competition winners.
Good evening. The Voice of the Constitution is proud to sponsor the Constitution Essay Contest for its 10th consecutive year. We would like to thank the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools and the Lee County School District for their ongoing partnership and support of this program. Congratulations to all of the Voice of Constitution Essay winners. The quality of the essays were very close, making it a challenging decision for the selection committee. The third place winner is Maria Bankhatar of Challenger Middle School. Please come up with your teacher, Brandy Redding. Maria actually earned a $50 Amazon gift card for herself and a Staples gift card for her teacher with an outstanding essay entitled, "The Constitution and Bill of Rights Influences." In second place is Nicole Jagarova of Three Oaks Middle School. Please come up with your teacher, Cynthia Restino. Okay. And Nicole earned a $75 Amazon gift card for herself and a Staples gift card for her teacher with her excellent essay titled, "Foundations of the United States Constitution." And that makes our first place author's winning essay was on Separation of Powers and Checks and Balances. Congratulations to Tasnia Hossein of Lexington Middle School. Please come with your teacher, Cynthia Volpe. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Let me just finish up here. Tasnia earned a $200 Amazon gift card for herself and a Staples gift card for her teacher. Thank you.
At this time, we'll pause briefly in case anybody wants to leave the auditorium before the business meeting begins. Thank you all and congratulations. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Quick, please address the agenda item of public comment.
School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the Board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it to me or Mrs. Johnson before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the Board this evening, Mrs. Fisher, the Board Chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning comment are posted at the back of the room. The Board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the Board Chair will address the assi- At the end of the public comment period, the Board Chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the Superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meetings are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition to clapping, booing, hissing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow rules regarding quorum should be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such marks will be required to relinquish the lectern per Board Policy 1.11. At this time, Madam Chair, the time per speaker is three minutes, but I have 20 cards. So if we have any more speakers, it will be reduced to two.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Quick. Anybody on the right side of the auditorium who did not sign a card and wishes to speak? Okay, when you get to the lecter, please state your name clearly so we can record it and then fill out a blue card for Mrs. Johnson. Anybody on the left side who did not fill out a card and wishes to speak? Okay, please call the first card, Mr. Quick.
So at 23, we will be at two minutes per speaker.
Two minutes per speaker, yes.
First card is Owen Foster Hickey.
Hello. That's better. My name's Owen Foster Hickey. I am a junior at Cape Coral High School. Today, I came here with a key to harmony around my neck. Why did I come with this key of harmony? Because I personally believe the school district of Lee County is like one big machine, working between the different functions of it, between the teachers, the students, the school board, and all staff throughout the district. And I believe it's important for the whole school district to work together in harmony and not have different aspects be at unrest. So today, myself and many people, many students here, many community members are here today to talk about the schedule change that's been proposed. This schedule change will... let me clarify. The schedule change to a seven-period day compared to an eight-period day will make many students' lives be affected and will hurt many of us individually. Specifically for myself, I am an IB junior. This means that I have in a curriculum that has seven mandatory IB classes. If the proposed bill is passed, then we will effectively be losing an elective. And I know that there have been proposals for alternative IB as well as ACE programs to be in place that we could have an elective still. But all of these, I feel, are way too rushed, way too un-researched to propose at this time of the year. I would like to ask why there's been no research, no public... no, excuse me. I feel that there's been way too much action taken in way too little time. As students that are concerned, I believe us, the students' voice, really should deserve some kind of a say and some kind of an opinion that we've never been asked. And I hope that through today, when you hear all of us, that you would maybe consider some of our perspective.
Number two is a duo of Adele Hamstra and Isabel Fiorentino.
Good afternoon. My name is Adele Hamstra. I attend Cape Coral High School.
And I'm Isabel Fiorentino. I attend Ida S. Baker High School.
We are here to give our opinion and what we believe is the opinion of many high school students about the proposed schedule change of going from a block schedule to seven periods every day. While the new schedule may seem that it will improve test scores, we also have to take into consideration the possible negative effects and drawbacks it will have on the student body. The majority, if not all, of Lee County high school students already experience the stress that comes with the workload of high school.
And although we understand the 30-minute add-on and are overly all right with that considering we have less school time than all other districts, after-school activities such as jobs, clubs, and sports will be overtaken by homework considering we'll have seven periods every day. And while we also understand that teachers are expected to come up with some sort of organized system of how they will distribute homework, many classes assign homework after every class for important reasons. For example, in a math class, it would be uncanny to not have homework to ensure that you've understood the lesson.
Also, the students in the IB, AP, and ACE programs receive a heavier workload due to the structure of the classes. Students have a lot of stress and considering it's our last years to enjoy being teens and not having to worry about the responsibilities that come with adulthood, and with this abrupt change sprung upon us, we'll be forced to add even more to our already full plates, which is the reason we started this session, which currently has over 1,700 signatures of students that feel the schedule change would negatively affect their high school experience. Not to mention, this added-on stress caused by aforementioned schedule change could lead to the deterioration of the mental health of students, especially those who already suffer from mental disorders such as depression, anxiety, and more.
So we implore with you all, before you make such an impactful decision, remember who you're making it for and our thoughts.
Good morning, Dr. Atkins, members of the Board. I hate to be here and cast a shadow on all the pleasantries, the music and everything that went on nicely, and it was wonderful to see our students. But I'm here to talk about the health and welfare of my substitute teachers as well as the teachers' period. I'm here today to ask you, what is this district doing or planning for the coronavirus? I haven't been in any loop, so I don't really know. But I have 1,500 substitute teachers, and I would hate to see any one of them come down with the illness. The question also boils, what protection is there especially for the district's guest teachers since substitute teachers have no medical insurance except their own personal? The majority of my subs are over 60 years of age. As a result, we're considered seniors, the most vulnerable group according to the government. So I want to know what we're doing. In past history, I can tell you that almost every teacher in the district has come down with an illness. I know I myself was just four weeks ago. I came down with a flu as well as pink eye, which I got somewhere in a classroom. So what are the issues to have for our plan for our substitutes? Does a sub get a bottle of hand wipe sanitizer like this one? They're miniature, but at least it's...
That's two minutes, Mr. Getz.
Thank you. My name is Alexander Rodriguez. I go to Cape Coral High School. I am a varsity swimmer, and I'm in multiple clubs such as Mock Trial, Model UN, and Youth in Government. These proposed changes to the school schedule are completely against what the IB program is all about. The IB program is made so students will be more involved with their community and more involved with other actions and more involved with extracurriculars. The school board wishes to extend the schedule and not only that, but take out a well-needed elective that many students rely on for either taking AP classes to advance their education or for a class where they can find their true passion. As a varsity swimmer who's in all these clubs, it will be very hard to keep up both clubs and swimming when I have to come to swimming late every single time I want to go to a club that I'm very interested in. The school board is also taking away time that is much needed for people of poorer economic status who need that time after school to go to part-time jobs so they can just support their family. And then they're going to have to choose between whether or not they want to support their family or they want to go to school and finish their education.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Atkins, Chair Fisher, and school board members. My name is Kevin Daly. I'm the president of the Teachers Association of Lee County, and I rise tonight to speak about the proposed schedule changes for next school year. These changes, if implemented, may have the opposite effect than intended. Some of the logic is that secondary students have less time in Lee County contact time than their peers around the state. Increasing the contact time should lead to better achievement levels for students, or so the logic dictates. We all want what's best for students and increased achievement, but what are we sacrificing in the move? A major factor in driving student achievement is the teacher. Time after time, we are told that the thing that has the greatest impact on student achievement is a highly trained, highly effective or effective classroom teacher. If these changes go through, I believe that teachers will have difficulty in maintaining their current level of effectiveness. This plan would decrease the amount of daily planning time teachers have during contract hours to plan their lessons, grade papers, or meet with their colleagues to hone their craft. This plan may very well meet the contractual requirements for planning, but it would take away from the current time that teachers have. Under the proposed plan, the workload for teachers will not decrease and may even increase. Even if there was no additional workload issues, it would still be less time to do the current work. All this work needs to be done, and that will lead to teachers doing even more work after their contract hours. This pressure and expectation that teachers just do more and more during their off time is a major factor when we speak of retention and recruitment. In closing, I would like to continue to challenge district leadership to get into classrooms as guest teachers and feel what it feels like to be in today's classrooms, or at least consult with those who are affected by their decisions. Some practical experience may better guide decisions than strictly relying on data.
My name is Nicole Bishop, and I go to Cape Coral High School, and I'm an IB junior. And today, I wanted to address the fact that not only would this schedule change negatively affect kids in the IB program, but kids in on-level classes, which would be not advanced more specifically, because we're saying that we're adding student-teacher contact time. However, I believe, and I'm sure many other students would agree, it's quality over quantity. It adds 19 days to the school year of contact time within our set dates that we have already scheduled, when we can easily add 19 days and do our current block schedule. This would take away... 51-minute periods would take away time of teachers to individually cater to each student's needs. Although learning a foreign language would be an example of a pro to the seven-period day, because it's easier for kids in some ways to learn when they have exposure every single day, kids that are struggling are not all going to do better for this change. I think that's very important to note that there are a lot of negatives. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for letting me come up. Thanks for public comment times. I'd like to say I'm really happy to be here. I've said before that I don't have any children in the school district, but I'm continually impressed with the quality of awards and recognition and arts and things that I see when we first come in, and I'm just amazed at how different school I think is nowadays than it was in my time. And I'd like to share a quote from Eleanor Roosevelt. "A mature person is one who does not think only in absolutes, who is able to be objective even when deeply stirred emotionally, one who has learned that there is both good and bad in all people and in all things, and who walks humbly and deals charitably with the circumstances of life, knowing that in this world, no one is all-knowing, and therefore all of us need both love and charity." And keeping that in mind, I again would like to thank the Board members. I call to mind sometimes the old... I think it's a metaphor is the right word, about ducks being very placid on the surface while their feet are paddling hard underneath. And when we look at you up here, all we see are your heads, and you're all very placid here. But I know how hard you're working behind the scenes and how hard you're fighting for things you believe in, and I just want to tell you that I appreciate the work that you do and the efforts that you put in, far above the number of hours I imagine you're getting paid for specifically. But thank you, and have a good evening.
Hello. My name is Rowan Borgy, and I'm a junior in the International Baccalaureate Program at Cape Coral High School. When I first heard about the proposed change from an eight-period block schedule to a seven-period day, I was, to put it frankly, apprehensive. Like many of my peers, I've only experienced the block schedule throughout my entire high school career, and I've never felt deprived or denied instructional time because of it. On the contrary, the extended time of the block schedule allows us to complete complex labs, practice for exams using real-world time limits, and to not only learn new skills, but be given the opportunity to actually practice with and apply them in a classroom setting. I, along with my classmates, Jennifer Jacoby and Melanie Peña, immediately began an investigation into what exactly the proposal was and what it would mean for the students at my school and other schools. What we found was shocking. Not only was this proposal, which would drastically alter the lives of the students and teachers in this district, relatively unknown to the public, it also appeared to be relatively unknown to the district officials themselves. In fact, at last week's community forum, which we all attended to gain more information, many of the district officials there reported to us that the first they had heard of the proposal was from our special edition, not from district staff. In fact, of everybody present, only one person was able or willing to give us information. He addressed our concerns about how this schedule would affect our testing, instructional time, and testing statistics by giving us numerical data about how this seven-period day would supposedly allow us more face-to-face time. Coming out of the meeting, I had the prevailing sense that the schedule change, rather than being fully considered, was a response to lower test scores based on data from other school districts, districts with different students, different teachers, different cultures, and it concerned me. Tonight, I ask that the school district carefully consider the pro...
That's two minutes. You need to wrap up, though. You're at three minutes now.
My name is Jennifer Jacoby, and I'm here to address the concerns of students around Lee County. Many students feel as if they have been disregarded in matters concerning these issues, and teachers feel the same. They feel like their input has not been taken seriously when dealing with these matters. However, we are the ones inside the classroom. We are the ones receiving the education, and we deserve the biggest say on this. We have found that there is not a clear communication system between members of the school district, teachers, principals, and students. I, as well alongside my staff with the newspaper, have worked tirelessly to try to build a bridge between all of these people, and we have talked extensively with our principal, Christian Engelhardt, to try to figure out a way to connect behind these ideas and to reach a schedule that we feel would be fit for everyone. However, this is not extending to other schools, and this is not reaching the district in a way we feel is fit. There have been many concerns expressed by students, which we have included in our paper, including how we feel class time would be wasted, not gained, with the seven-period schedule. schedule. Adding more time in the hallways just cuts away from class time we could be spending with teachers. And oftentimes, the first couple minutes and the last couple minutes of every period are used to pack up, or to provide simple instruction, or to just get everyone organized. Now, in a block schedule, this isn't as big of a problem, because you have 80 other minutes to compensate for that time. We are feel that the quality of our learning is our number-one priority. We are more than numbers, we are more than statistics, and we feel as if a proper length of a class is what we need to achieve academic success. Test scores are not everything, and that is what we are here to express today. We understand that there is a length in time that we are in a deficit to other counties and other districts around the state, and we are open to adding this 30 minutes, but we feel as if it should be up to each school on how they want to go about handling that matter, because each school is different and each student's needs are different. All schools have different programs and academies, and we need to be able to adjust to all of them. I have talked with Mr. Engelhardt about several possibilities that we can incorporate at Cape Coral High School. However, these might not be the best for other schools in our city.
That's two minutes.
Kathleen Hickey?
My name is Kathleen Hickey, and I am an employee of the school district of Lee County and have been for 27 years, and I know you always make the right decisions for the students. I'm here not as a school district employee, though. I'm here as a parent today of Owen Foster Hickey and the students from Cape Coral High School and other high schools that have shown courage, this month's courage, to express their opinion and how they feel. I also live with an IB student and see all the work that he does, and all the clubs and activities that he's involved in, and all the study that he does. I couldn't imagine if he had seven classes, coming home with homework of those seven classes every day. And also, as some of the students said, I think they have more of a in-depth study that they can do, more complex labs that they can produce in that 90-minute period. And I know Owen and myself were not opposed to the 30 minutes, however, the number of classes in the day that they would have to go to would not give them enough time to actually develop what they've learned. I think in college, you don't have classes every day, seven classes in a day, and so we're preparing them for college, and in my opinion, we should stay with the block scheduling to prepare them for that type of study. And they have also been in this program now for three years with the same expectations. As a junior, they've completed their first year of the IB program with the pre-IB for the first two years, ninth and 10th, and now all of a sudden, we're going to change the schedule on them and change everything that they've already planned for in that entire three years. Thank you.
Joe North?
Good evening.
Sir, before my two minutes start, I have a few little questions. Okay, so I've got a letter from an attorney who cannot be here. Do I have to read that for my two minutes and not have to start with the next one?
You can submit it for public record purposes. It can be disseminated to the board.
So I'm here tonight to congratulate the board on having selected attorney Kathy Bruno to be the next attorney for you, the school board. And I congratulate you because I have the same high regard for attorney Bruno that you do. As an attorney myself, and I've been practicing for 30 years now, and one of the highest recommendations that I can have is when someone refers someone to me, or when another attorney refers someone to me, or recommends someone to me. Well, I say that in light of the fact that I have that high regard for attorney Bruno, because I have myself referred and recommended family members to attorney Bruno, and I would assume that everyone can appreciate that no one would recommend a family member to an attorney if you didn't have the complete confidence and trust in that attorney. And what attorney Bruno could do is more than just act as an attorney or a lawyer, but she's going to be a counselor, because that is in the definition of being a lawyer. So as a counselor, she has the wisdom and foresight to look down the road and see issues and questions and potential pitfalls that the board may encounter to keep you out of those situations. But she also, as a counselor and lawyer, knows that once those issues come up, she's able to maneuver those, to amicably resolve those without you having to go through protracted litigation and enter the courtroom. But what I know about attorney Bruno is that if she has to go to the courtroom, she knows her way around the courtroom, and she can be that litigator for you, too. So in closing, I just say, you know, she's won the race, because you selected her as the attorney. So I implore you to not move the finish line at all. She's gotten to that finish line.
That's two minutes. And if you want to give the letter to Mrs. Johnson, she can take that for public record.
All right, thank you.
Louis Navarro?
I want to keep you guys honest. Good evening, Dr. Atkins, board. Lou Navarro, I want to depart a minute here. How long are we going to beat these high school students to death with extra this, extra that? The governor wants a civics test. The legislature says they need to do an SAT. No wonder they hate high school. I don't blame them. This has got to stop. And I'll take the tests with you, Dr. Atkins, and the rest of the board. Let's see, and the governor. Let's see if we can pass that civics test, and the legislature should pass all the certification tests for the teachers. Silly people. Substitute with no benefits. Yep, I'm not going to sub with the coronavirus. You don't even give these people social security. Marvin's right. If we all quit, you're going to have a heck of a time filling the jobs. You don't pay, you don't give us benefits, you don't do any of that. Now, transparency? I call it opaqueness. Here's the article in the paper. You don't even have soap in most of the bathrooms, and I go around to the schools. I want to see you take that bogus tax increase, put more soap, let these kids wash their hands. I know they tear out things, but we need to help them with this coronavirus, okay? And I've been in touch with the Department of Revenue. I'll be filing a complaint about that bogus election, okay? We're working on it. I have people in Tallahassee that want to do the right thing. Also, Perk, I've been in touch with them. You need to cease and desist that meeting with one board member. You are discriminating against one board member. You know what Perk said? Why don't you advertise it so we can all come and be here and see it? Tyree Blan got you in trouble for going in the back room. What is wrong with this place?
That's two minutes.
It should have been three. I'm sorry.
Hira Marrero?
Yeah, we vote for you people. We pay your salaries. It should have been three.
Hira Marrero?
My name's Hira Marrero. I go to Riverdale High School. I am also an IB student. And why I'm here today is also to voice the concerns of our IB students regarding the schedule change that you guys have proposed. While we do believe that change is important to success, we ask you to consider the voices of everybody here, but we would also like to let you know that it's, we understand why you're doing this, and most of the IB and AP and ACE kids that go to like these schools, they are easily adaptable, and I, we do understand that you're doing this for the majority of the students that do need the help passing the FSA and passing all these state assessments. However, we would like if you probably gave us the schools more time and more autonomy in deciding the decisions, but we do trust you and our administrators to handling this in the best way possible. Thank you.
Megan Ayers?
Hi, I'm Megan Ayers. I'm 16, and I'm also a junior at Riverdale High School, where I partake in the IB program. While I understand your proposed ideas and the benefits, I do not think that this is a decision that is fair to me. A change from block schedule to a seven-day period would take away my elective, as well as augment my already large workload. As an IB student, it's hard to get a break. I find this in my elective class and my alternating block schedule. While I understand being an IB student is not the majority of cases, I believe that the school board must consider what is in the best interest for all students. As an IB student, I believe that my peers and I should be considered in a decision that would so clearly negatively affect us and result in extra burnout and extra stress. My peers and I have spoken to our administration and IB coordinator, and we have full faith in them to preserve whatever decision is made. We understand that the IB community is able to adapt, but we are here to fight for the best education that we can have possible. I hope that the voices of me and other IB students will be considered today. Thank you.
Michelle Hilton Terry?
Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I want to congratulate you on the selection of Kathy Dupue Bruno as your new board attorney. Ms. Dupue Bruno serves as the president of the Fort Myers Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Local Chapter President. Delta Sigma Theta is a 107-year-old nonprofit international organization. We have over 300,000 members and over 1,000 chapters throughout the world. In her role as chapter president, Ms. Dupue Bruno continually demonstrates the skills and abilities that lend themselves to exactly what she would be charged with in serving this body, enforcing parliamentary procedures, observing Robert's Rules of Order. The operation of Delta Sigma Theta is not some small opportunity. We have policies and procedures on a national and international level, and Ms. Dupue Bruno observes, manages, and executes them well. It is Ms. Dupue Bruno's responsibility to serve her chapter, to make sure that we're in compliance with all national protocol procedures. She does this well. She would do it well for you. She will do it well for you. You will not find a more competent, intelligent, hard-working, motivated individual. She is impeccable in her preparation and research and knowledge. She's always over-prepared. Ms. Dupue Bruno's experience, expertise, work ethic, commitment, dedication, and service has brought her to this point.
That's two minutes.
Two people.
That's two minutes. Alexandra Dorofiev?
My name is Alexandra Dorofiev, and I would like to thank you all for all your hard work that you put into helping out the students here in Lee County. I don't know if you are aware, but I interviewed Mr. Paul Flores. He is the operations manager of Public Utilities Waste Prevention and Collection in Lee County. He said that contamination of recycling is at 90,000 tons annually. This makes 25% of recycled items non-recyclable. Also, Styrofoam, specifically polystyrene trays, are not recyclable in Lee County. Today, my goal is to increase recycling in schools, and the only way to do that is to increase awareness and knowledge of what can and cannot be recycled. I would like to propose that no more Styrofoam trays or plastic silverware is used in schools. I would also like to propose to start a recycling and plastic-free campaign in Lee County schools. This would include adding recycling bins around the school and equipping janitors with the proper means to be able to recycle, because oftentimes, they don't have the proper means to recycle these items that are in the recycling bins, and they're forced to just throw them I know that a former student at Fort Myers High School, I'm sorry, I'm in the global politics class at Fort Myers, and I'm doing this as part of a project to increase awareness for plastics in southwest Florida, and specifically in our schools. And I know that a former student came to speak to you guys a couple years ago, and she was also, she also wished to address the issue of plastics in schools, so I was wondering what steps have been taken to reduce plastic and Styrofoam in schools, and also if you would...
Arlene Fado?
Thank you. I want to first start by saying thank you for your public service. This is a really tough job, and I know you get a lot of feedback from a number of individuals in the community, and you're working long, long hours. I'm here tonight in support of your selection of Kathy Bruno as your top candidate for the school board position of attorney. What an incredible selection. But I feel that it's equally important to comment on the process. I watched both the February 25 workshop and also yesterday's workshop with great interest. The contrast between the two meetings and the learning of activities that occurred between those two meetings have me deeply concerned about the agreed-upon action and the flagrant disregard of governance. It was stated multiple times by one of the board members, one of the main responsibilities of this board is policymaking and the hiring of two incredibly important positions, and I think we can all agree on that. But as incredibly important as this position is, we learned only after a top candidate's election was made, suddenly the process needed to be massively corrected. Wouldn't this member have ensured the process was on point prior to the hiring process? I could go through a list of egregious and simply jaw-dropping exhibitions displayed yesterday by not all board members, but instead, let me give thanks to the board members who said this. Let's make the salary process and contracting fair. Let's consider that Ms. Bruno is ending her private practice, that she is taking a huge risk for public service when we discuss timing of her review. Let's believe her when she says, yes, I will do the training. Let's read the job description again and point out that the board certification or other-like experience counts. Let's consider deeply our fellow board members' thoughts and opinions, and not blame them on emotion, but actually believe them when they say what they thought and reasoned about the candidates. I'm really glad you said that. It was frustrating as a parent, a professional, as a member of the public to watch, but I am so glad Ms. Bruno's contract is in progress. I'm very glad that you had two other really great candidates.
Patricia Sala?
My name's Patricia Sala, and I am part of two different complete count committees, and I wanted to remind everyone, especially the students that are sitting here, that something important that happens every 10 years starts this week on March 12th. That's Census 2020, and we need to make sure that every student is counted in our district, that every child under the age of five is counted, because these population counts give us access, as a county, to federal funds for education. Of the 20 largest federally funded programs, 10 of them fund education, so it's really critical that our county gets it right this time. 10 years ago, we only counted 72% of our population. Our goal with all the complete count committees is to make sure that we get that at least above 90, but we would like to make sure everyone's counted. I wanted to, while I was here, thank the district for the work that they've done, especially Betsy Vaughn and Irma Lancaster, who's the director of communications, for the fantastic flyers that the district has created in different languages, for the outreach that you've done. I know that Ms. Fisher, Ms. Giovanelli, and also Ms. Morgan have shared with me organizations to reach out to, that Ms. Gittens is involved in a complete count committee or is leading one. one out in Lehigh to ensure that everyone's counted. So on March twelfth, the Census is available online, and in the next two to three weeks, we can expect that we'll be getting an invitation in the mail, a card, that invites all of us to go online. If you happen to know someone that is not comfortable with the online process, the easiest way is to do it by phone. You can call the Census number, and the Census is available in thirteen different languages that are commonly spoken in the United States. And a Census worker who has taken...
Two minutes. Shana Zupki. It mentions that you have a letter of reference if you want to give that to Mrs. Johnson, too, at some point.
Shana Zupki, I am here acting as a professional reference for Kathy Bruno. I also have a letter from Keith Grossman with Grossman Law that also is acting as a professional reference on her behalf. Unfortunately, I don't have a printed letter to provide, but I can always provide that after, email it if I need to. I have worked with Kathy over the last few years on a fairly regular basis in the courts through family law and also dependency cases, which is involving DCF, and also on some personal levels, working on different committees and different organizations in the community. I want to congratulate you on your decision working with Ms. Bruno. She is highly motivated to be working in the community and provide service to the community. She is also highly skilled and has a high knowledge of the law, and any areas that she needs to be educated on, she will be able to take that as a task. I was here at the meeting yesterday. I do have concerns about how the process was being handled. You first decide on the process, and then you follow those rules of how you hire. You don't change that halfway through. If that is how the process of law is being followed, as a board, that is why you have a current attorney that provides that process during all meetings, but that's also how you follow the law while you are an attorney. You have rules, you have regulations, you present that in court. I was very disturbed at wanting to change the process after a selection has been made. As far as her skills, I can only recommend her highly from the work that I have done with her. Mr. Grossman, who owns Grossman Law, states, "I highly recommend Kathy Bruno for a position as attorney with the Lee County School District. I have known Kathy for several years. We have worked on committees together in the legal community, and we have opposing sides in legal matters. In our commitment to work, we have also collaborated and presented trainings to professionals. Kathy is a true professional. She is highly competent."
Two minutes. I'll give you my card, so you can send it to me, and I can get it in the public record. Tricia Prado. And Madam Chair, this is the last of the blue cards.
Thank you. My name is Tricia Prado. Been a licensed attorney for twenty-four years, and I've known Kathy Dupuy Bruno for almost seventeen years. I know that she gave my name and number as a professional reference, but as no one called me, I did want to put my support for Kathy as the school board attorney position on the record. Kathy is an extremely competent, tenacious, and formidable attorney. I've seen her win some very difficult cases, and that's because she is diligent in her preparation and representation of her clients and can think outside the box. She's knowledgeable not only of court procedures but of the rules of evidence. She stays up to date on the law and knows and understands how case law and statutory changes can have an impact on a multitude of things. She has ample experience in legal research and writing and discovery, as well as presenting cases in court. She's also served as an attorney at Leitem and a guardian at Leitem, where she's met with children, parents, teachers, principals, counselors, special education specialists, and other parties that may have a bearing on a case, and she's familiar with the system. She's worked on individual education plans and five-oh-four rehab plans. She also had a federally litigated case in Washington, DC, where she got the district to pay for private school education in Neighbor in Virginia at the district's expense, as that was the only free, appropriate public education for the child. She has conducted training for attorneys and non-attorneys alike, both locally and statewide. She's been a section chair of the LCBA Family Law Section and co-chair of the Family Law Guardian at Leitem Program, and she can definitely lead and coordinate other attorneys. She's also a certified mediator and has the skills needed to get parties to reach common ground. She has a knack for communicating and reaching people from diverse backgrounds and working with them. And I also want to note that she writes well legally and has even had multiple articles published in local media. I believe there was a comment about typos in her resume, and I did review such and found none. Kathy has tirelessly advocated for the best interests of the children she has worked with, and I have no doubt that she will continue to work for the best interests of the children of Lee County in her role as a school board attorney, as she is extremely competent, knowledgeable of the law, has excellent attorney and soft skills, and is extremely...
Two minutes. Two minutes. Those are all the cards I have, Madam Chair.
Yes. Hand in your card, ma'am.
Well, the chair is going to open it up to the people on the left first and then the people on the right, so you'll have the opportunity.
Okay. So I think Mr. Fox, you're next.
If you can give it to Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Board. Hi, George Fox. Do I turn the card in? No. Okay. Congratulations on that sales tax. That eighty million dollars a year comes in handy. It's working great. Along the same lines, on our way over here today to this meeting, I was listening to NPR radio, and comes on, Florida State Legislature is worried about coronavirus, so they want to reserve some money. Of course, that means, basically, they're going to take the money away from the teachers. I don't know if you know that or not, but that's what the plan is. I don't know if it's final, but it's happening. Once again, I come in today, says, "The state is running local school districts. What I feel against what the Constitution of this state says it should, and it's completely out of hand, and I would like to see this board fight back." I would like to see this board fight for the millage to be determined here and not in Tallahassee. I think the time has come. What started out as a good idea in nineteen seventy-three to make sure that funding for every student was equal, no matter where they lived in the state, has been taken over by politicians who don't represent the vast majority of the people. And I assure you, it took this board a long time to go after the sales tax, but the public was behind you, and the public is behind public education. And don't be afraid to go to the public and go get the millage. You need that. It's the only way you'll ever do right by the teachers or the students, because it will not happen with the current political situation as it is. And so that is what I would like this board to pursue. I know you worked very hard working with the legislature, and everyone tries hard, and they all say and do the right thing, but they don't necessarily do the right things. It's your job. That's what you should be doing. I'd like to see this board become much more oriented and getting...
Two minutes. And if you can just, everybody who's speaking, if you could turn in your blue cards to Mrs. Johnson when you're done, that way we can have it for public records.
Okay, the next two young ladies here, do you want to stand up behind one another at the podium and clearly state your name?
Everyone, my name is Melanie Penyon. I am a junior at Cape Coral High School. And first and foremost, I would like to thank all of the high school students here. You guys honestly inspire me, and I think you're amazing just for coming here. I think as a district, we should be proud that our students feel able to speak out about things they don't like or things they do like. Secondly, I'd like to thank the board. I know that this is not an easy job, and I'd also like to thank you for answering my many emails that I sent you when I was researching the proposal to change the school schedule. So you've probably noticed I'm a high school student and probably think I'm going to talk about the schedule changes, but I actually want to talk about something else. I want to talk about communication. I would like to ask that before future proposals or plans are spoken about at an official meeting or brought up, that there are clear, defined plans and that all the board members truly understand everything that's happening. Because I think as students, we should feel that we can come to our board members and ask them questions and just ask anyone we need to talk to about these plans. And it was very confusing as a student to have teachers and these rumors flying in school saying that these changes were permanent and that they were happening, but when we went to board members, they would tell us that they were confused. They didn't understand why everyone was panicking. I just ask that there be more communication. I think it's a simple request. And lastly, I know that we only have two minutes, but I really think this is a discussion that needs more time. And if you want more information about the schedule changes, go to seahawksi.org. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Madison Holman, and I am a sophomore at North Fort Myers High. I'm in the Ace in Arts Programs, currently enrolled at FSW, and I actively participate in the JROTC program as a team commander and in various teams. I also participate in extracurriculars through and outside of school, including marching band, and I dance outside of school. Obviously, I'm a very busy student, and I hardly have time to do my schoolwork as is. With the new schedule proposed, I would have every class every day, which means more homework. Also, the lessons would be very shortened, and there would not be time to make sure students fully understand and comprehend the lessons and allow them to ask questions when needed. In math, our lessons already take the entire class period and some take two. So if the schedule is changed, we'd essentially just be copying notes rather than actively learning and participating in the lesson. Most tests, not to mention tests, most tests for advanced students take all periods, so they would have to split them, which could lead to possible cheating if a student looks ahead, or they would have to cut the test in half, which would mean some students would have less time on the parts they need to take more time on. Also, you would be cutting an elective from our schedule, which is essential for students, especially ones who are in Ace in Arts, such as myself. Maybe instead of jumping into decisions made by adults that don't understand the student life, perhaps take a vote from students and teachers. After all, we do live in a democratic government, so should we not act as one even in terms of state and local government? I can guarantee you most students and teachers would be opposed to a seven-period day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One else on the left side? Just moving to the ma'am, the woman on the right.
My name is Vera Bergerman. I'm an attorney. I've been an attorney for forty years. I was at the meeting yesterday. I, too, was disturbed at the discord that I saw for the reasons laid out by Attorney Shana Zupki, but I saw that there were some questions about Kathy Dupuy Bruno's abilities, perhaps as an attorney. I will tell you, I have known her since two thousand six. I underestimated her. She's affable and very easy to get along with, and I underestimated her in court. I was looking at the floor, looking for the hole to drop into, as she was absolutely demolishing my case. You are beyond fortunate to have a candidate like this for your position. She is always prepared. I have had one-day trials against her, and I have never underestimated her since two thousand six. And she has, again, done much in the legal community as well as the community at large. I have worked with her in a literacy project, and she is a very giving, again, affable, and immensely competent attorney. And I consider it a huge loss to our family law community to have Kathy leave her practice, but it would be a tremendous gain for the students and the public in Lee County. Thank you.
I believe that's everyone, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you. Okay. I'll start with Ms. Sala. Thank you very much for coming and speaking on behalf of the Census. We all understand how important the complete count is, and we are doing everything we can to continue to advocate for it in our own communities. For all of the students who came to speak about the schedule changes, I'm so proud of you all. You were eloquent and articulate, and you did your homework. I know you love homework, so I really appreciate you giving us your input, and we hear you, we're listening. And following the rest of my comments, I'm going to ask Dr. Atkins if he has something to add to that, or maybe Dr. Spiro does. And with courage being the word of the month, you certainly have demonstrated that tonight. Thank you. For all of those who came to advocate for Kathy Bruno, we appreciate your comments, and we hear you, too. And thank you for being courageous and coming and sharing what you know with us. We appreciate that. Mr. Getz, I don't know if he's still here. Okay. I'll get with him and give him information about what we're doing about the coronavirus. Yes, thank you. And Mr. Navarre. We have a lot of information on our website. We are in daily, our health people are in daily contact with the CDC and the Department of Health. We're following their recommendations. We're deep cleaning our schools. Everyone is working very diligently to comply with any suggestions that are made by the medical community, and we continue to be diligent and aware, because safety of our staff and students, including our guest teachers, is paramount to us. And Owen, I should have gotten your autograph this morning. I knew it. Owen was speaking at the Drug Free Coalition United Way Funding Meeting on behalf of the Students Against Destructive Decisions, who at Cape Coral High School are a nationally-recognized group. So, thank you. Mr. Fox, welcome back. Yes, the money from the sales tax is coming in very handy, and we do need to be diligent about fighting for local control. Thank you. Dr. Atkins?
Well, thank you. I would echo your words relative to our students. They all did a really great job, which is, always makes us proud as educators to see our wonderful, wonderful students get up here and speak to the board. It's not an easy thing to do, and so not only were you well-prepared, but you were very articulate and demonstrated a great deal of courage, so I definitely appreciate that. And I think we mentioned this to the board, but we did talk to a number of them, Mr. Simmons in particular, who was mentioned out at Cape Coral High School, and they conducted themselves very professionally there as well. So again, in both cases, I was very proud of our students. What I would encourage everyone to do is go on and view the workshop, the presentation that was provided to the board yesterday. I really think that that is full of a lot of information. The folks on our team certainly did, they really have looked at all the input. We've received emails, phone calls from students, community members, parents, and they have taken all of that into consideration and have also come up with even other alternatives. I also think that it does provide some other options relative to electives, and so again, I would encourage everyone to please go take a look at that, because I think that gives you a significant amount of information, including some of our staff and some of the things that Mr. Daley mentioned. I think it would also be good for him to see that presentation as well, particularly as it relates to the planning issue and some of the differences that we see in their district. I did go into the classroom, and he mentioned that. I went into an elementary classroom, and you talk about time there, and that schedule's not changing. that schedule's not changing. That is significantly less time than what you see at other levels, particularly when you're talking about escorting kids to specials and PE and lunch. So anyway, I do, I would want everybody to do that, because I think it's important for all the information to be out there, so people can really understand what the options are and some of the rationale behind the effort to do this. We did look at data coming out. We've been watching data for several years, but this last year in particular, I really asked the team to take a hard look at better options, you know, coming out of, coming out of the summer when we got all of our high school data in particular. And we looked at high school data relative to demographics, so comparing high schools to high schools with similar demographics, and you can see that in your elementary and middle as well. So these are decisions that the team has spent quite a bit of time on. We are still considering our options. I'm going to meet again with our team with high school principals, because they continue to get information from, and feedback from teachers, from parents, and also from students. So students, I do, again, appreciate that some of you mentioned talking to your principals. And again, I appreciate that, because they do bring that back, and they do share that with us prior to us making a decision. So again, thank you. We are definitely continuing to listen, and we hope to have a decision very soon, and we'll communicate that to, out to the community. Speaking of communication, I would also highly encourage everyone to, you know, Mr. Navarre mentioned the coronavirus, and so did Mr. Getz and others. We have a lot of information on our website that is very pertinent to students, to parents, and our community members, and would just encourage you to do that. I think it's, you know, when it comes to communication, that's a great source of information. And like was stated, we are in communication with the Department of Health, the Department of Education, the CDC, and are really closely following their recommendations when we're making decisions regarding a number of things in the school district, including how to handle absences, how to handle travel, and things like that. And rather than go into all of that here, I would encourage people to go to the website, because that information is spelled out, and continue to check back with our website, because I think that's a really good source of information. So I think that covers the two items, Madam Chair. So thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And I think I forgot, Mr. Daley. Thank you again for standing up for teachers. I know that's your job, and we support that. We need our teachers, for sure. I think that our students are able to show us what they showed us this evening, both in the entertainment, in the awards that they received, and in the speaking that they did. I think they're showing us what happens when we have good teachers who care and are dedicated. And so it's a big team effort. Thank you. Alexandria, the plastic. Oh, Alexandra with the recycling. She left. Oh, no, there she is. Okay, great. We're going to look into this. I think this is very important. Recycling is very important. Saving the environment is something that we need our young people to be prepared to do. So if we have your information, and someone will get back to you with some follow-up. But thank you for your suggestion. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Okay.
Just a word on that, the recycling piece. I do certainly appreciate you coming up and sharing that. I think that's very, that's very, very important. One of the things in Lee County, you know, we have the facility there at Buckingham.
Incinerator.
Incinerator. That is an amazing facility. If you get an opportunity to go visit that, it really, and the reason I bring it up is because unfortunately, a lot of communities across this nation do not invest in recycling and incineration like we did here in Lee County. And so that really greatly reduces landfill, literally reduces the volume of garbage. I think we produce something like 600 million tons per year in Lee County. Actually, probably a little bit more now with growth, because it's like about a ton per, you know, citizen. And so if you think about the volume of that in a landfill, and then if you take it to an incinerator, it reduces it down to about 10 percent, and they're looking for ways to reduce that further down to 5 percent. So Lee County has led the way in environmentally. Our students in Lee County, Six Mile Cypress Strand and all of those things, that's students that drove that effort and really preserved the wetlands off of the Six Mile Strand, and that has really helped us moving forward with filtering water, with preserving our aquifer. And again, that was all kids having the courage to stand up at microphones and write in. That made a change back in the 70s and 80s, and it's so, I'm proud to see them doing it, continuing to do those things today. So thank you, and I'd say continue your efforts, because it's definitely a worthy cause.
Thank you very much, Dr. Atkins. That was great. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of consent action items. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the material, and we do have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business tabled items? Mrs. Giovinelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none.
Ms. Gittens? Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, G2. And in particular, I'm just looking at one of those job descriptions. So I'm wondering, as we've done in past times, if we can split that one, or if it's...
Since it's all grouped together, you need to pull all of G2. And then, once the decision's made, you could either move it as a whole, or move it, if that ends up getting taken out, move it without that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with the exception of the pulled item? Motion.
Second.
Ms. Gittens and Ms. Giovinelli, please record your vote. Dr. Atkins, will you please read your recommendation for the pulled item?
I'm just getting there. Thank you. Recommend approval of the 12 job descriptions as a part of Phase Four of the Envision 2030 Job Description Review.
Board members, is there a motion for the pulled item?
I have a motion. I'd like to move that we approve all job descriptions in G2 with the exception of the associate principal position.
I'll hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Jordan. Okay. It has been moved by Ms. Patrica, seconded by Mrs. Jordan, that we approve all items in G2 with the exception of the associate principal. All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Do you want?
Well, I think...
Discussion if any.
Want that motion, yeah.
Discussion? Okay. Thank you. Voice vote? Yes, Dr. Atkins.
I don't know if you want me to address the item prior to your vote.
We'll make a separate motion for the associate principal.
Be isolated. It needs a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven, zero. Okay. Now, the item for associate principal. That will be a motion for that?
I move that we discuss the job title Associate Principal.
Okay. A second. And Ms. Gittens. Moved by Mrs. Vaughn, seconded by Mrs. Gittens. Any discussion?
I'm not sure that discussion is a motion.
Yeah, it's not. I mean, there's not an action taken on discussion. Discussion would come based upon a motion. So a motion, I guess, would either be to approve Associate Principal or eliminate Associate Principal, and then if there's a second for either one, you'd have discussion.
Okay. Can I change my motion then?
Okay.
So I move that we do not approve the job title Associate Principal.
And I second. Okay, and then discussion.
Okay. I'm going to pretty much repeat what I said yesterday. So board members have heard me on this, but probably most of you have not. I feel that the position Associate Principal is an unneeded added layer in our school administrations, that we have a principal position, we have assistant principal positions, and often at most of the schools, the assistant principals take up particular areas besides just discipline. For instance, most schools have an APC, an Assistant Principal, who specializes and works directly with curriculum. We also have, it's not an administrative position, but it's taken up some of the administrative duties and discipline. We have the deans. And I just feel that as a district, we've become very top-heavy with our administration. And when this was discussed yesterday, I believe it was Mrs., or Dr. Pruitt, I'm sorry, Dr. Pruitt, who said that, well, this was just a new job title, and we haven't, you know, we haven't looked for anybody to fill this position. We haven't decided on schools that might need Associate Principals. But typically, whenever we have a job description, it follows that we have that job in the schools or in the district, or wherever that job needs to be. So my opinion is that this is a redundancy, that it's not really needed, and that it keeps us from becoming even more administratively top-heavy.
Thank you. Other discussion? Ms. Gittens?
Yes, and I agree with Ms. Vaughn, and as I stated yesterday as well, that in my experience and what I have seen, when the principal is out of the building, that one or more of the assistant principals takes that position, and it is helpful to prepare them for the next step, should they want to go into being a principal. So I agree that it's kind of redundant. And then you bring also the thought, is there a pool for it, or how do you choose it? And if it's the people that are in the assistant principal pool, I just really feel it's just going to create more layers and more issues than it will help, when we already have assistant principals there that can do the job.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, did you have some input, please?
I have recommended an Associate Principal for the reasons that, you know, I think were stated. But let me restate some of them. I strongly believe in succession planning. I believe that particularly when you have fragile schools, that you need to, for continuity, you should identify a potential future leader and give them more experience than what we currently give, you know, our assistant principals in these positions. I think that one of the things that principals, particularly Tier Three principals, came to me and made a request that we really look at compensation, and we really consider a position of Associate Principal to attract talent to these schools and keep them there, because they have other opportunities to move on to schools that are not as fragile, to take, you know, principal positions, rather than being able to hang in there for succession. So I think that, again, this is something that I believe, I don't consider it additional layers. I consider that building a career ladder for not only just teachers, but also administrators is something that makes sense. And this is one that we would select for fragile schools. And again, we did, we did receive input and requests from our principals, who are, in my opinion, the experts in their building in terms of determining what their need is. So that is why we recommended the position, and I stand by that recommendation.
Ms. Patrica?
I understand your reasoning, Dr. Atkins. I also understand what was presented to us yesterday. I don't see this as an additional layer of administration. I see this as a associate instead of an assistant. And I can think of some schools, as you talk about fragile schools, I can think about some schools specifically where this would be a great fit. So I would support the adoption of the job description.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yesterday, I think Dr. Pruitt mentioned that this would be in lieu of an AP position at the school. Is that, was that my understanding?
That is correct, yes.
So why can't we still have that with a present AP and designate them to be that associate without having an additional job description?
Because, as I mentioned before, one of the things we're trying to do is attract our talented assistant principals to go to our most challenging schools and stay there, particularly for succession. And in order to do that, I think it does require additional compensation, which would go with this position. So you would have the same number of positions at a particular school. You wouldn't add another administrator, but you would add additional compensation to, because, let's face it, you know, our Tier Three schools in particular, which is where we're considering these positions, particularly the very fragile Tier Three schools, are where we need to attract talent and keep talent. And this is a way for us to be able to do that, I think, more effectively than we currently can. So that's why we're recommending the position. Again, it's not adding another assistant principal, but it is providing a, I think, a needed acknowledgement, recognition of this is someone who's a demonstrated leader as an assistant principal, who's ready to be a principal, and this gives us the opportunity to retain them in some of the more fragile schools.
So I didn't get to really finish. So I still think that we have the, I would rather see the overall picture and look at it more broad, and see how we can attract the teachers, and maybe supplement that more for teachers that are traveling to these schools that are in higher risk and that has the need. So I would be more supportive if it was a positions that it affected the whole school overall in compensation, and that attractive, to attract the best teachers, not just the, I think the assistant principals are all wanting to be principals, and that's their career ladder that they're working on. So I think that, I don't think that we need to have that extra layer, because they're already on the track for the principalship regardless. So I think that we need to look at more of compensating teachers. That's my opinion. So I won't be supporting that layer.
I understand, and understand that we are working on that. We have both Teacher Career Ladder Committee and the Turnaround Committee, which are both focused there. So that is, I agree with the teacher part of it, but work is happening in there as well. And I would also say that when it comes to that area of work, that this district continues to lead the state and the nation in terms of what we do. We don't get probably the recognition that I think the district deserves, but we do more of that here than most districts. But having said that, I'm But having said that, I'm not satisfied either with where the teacher compensation is for our fragile school, and that's something that I've directed Dr. Pruitt and her team to continue to work on, and she's got two committees working on just that.
Yes, Ms. Gittens make a comment?
Yes. Oh, okay. The only thing that concerns me, and I know Superintendent, you've said a couple of times of attracting qualified people. That concerns me in that you've got assistant principals that have worked in that school, that know that school, that know those students, and we are attempting to bring in someone over them and give them more money to, you know, take over that school. When we talk about succession plans, I think about working with the people that are there and helping them to improve or get to whatever point it is they need. It's very difficult, you know, having worked in the schools, and you bring in a new administrator, and there's always some upheaval for a while because they don't know that school, they don't know those students, and especially in the tier threes that you're talking about. It's challenging, and you have to know those students and know the temperature of that school and how to deal with them. And oftentimes, it's very different for a person who's been at a school and successful that is not tier-three to come into tier-three. It's sticker shock. So I'm just concerned of overstepping someone who is dedicated to being in that situation with a difficult school and not giving them the recognition to be able to move up.
Well, and in response to that, I think in many cases, it would be somebody at the school who might have the opportunity to leave and be an assistant principal or principal at another school, but this keeps them there at that particular school. So I think, you know, when you talk to principals, you know, they would probably be advocating the same thing that you're advocating, but this is one way that they would be able to keep that person there at that school, working at that tier-three school rather than going on to like a tier-one school.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, and I wanted to add one other thing that I wasn't thinking about, but that was in my head yesterday. I like to see our money go where it will do the best for our children, and I don't think associate principal fills that bill. As a matter of fact, I'm not sure what the pay grade 13, exactly what the salary is, but I'm guessing that we could supply two counselors or social workers or combination thereof, behavioral specialists. There are so many other people that we could use the same amount of money from our operational fund and, I think, do more good than add another administrative level in the school. And I agree with all the other comments that were made about having the assistant principals are the ones that are our future also in this. And that's why, that's another reason why I think this is not a good position to add.
Madam Chair, I have a question for the Superintendent, if I may?
Yes.
Kind of two in one. You're not planning to hire 15 of these next year, right?
No.
That's the first question. And the second question is, if you were to hire an associate principal, that would come before us as board for approval, right? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, board members? So what we're approving here tonight strictly is the job description. That wasn't the motion?
The current motion, yeah, the current motion on the table is to not approve.
To not approve?
Yeah, to not approve this.
All right, then. Seeing no more comments, I will take the vote. Those in favor of not approving the associate principal job description, please affirmative by aye or a thumbs up.
Aye.
One, two, three. Okay. Those not in favor of not approving principals' job description?
Aye. Approving the job description?
Just not approving it.
Not approving it. Not in favor of not approving it. So the motion?
Motion fails.
Fails four to three.
I move that we approve the job description for associate principal.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Patrica moved that we approve the job description. Ms. Morgan seconded, and the vote is four to three.
The three.
Ms. Gittens, Ms. Vaughn, okay. Okay, moving right along. Included in the approval of the consent items on the agenda is the resolution proclaiming March 8th through the 14th, 2020, as National Sleep Awareness Week. Mr. Quick, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Okay. Moving right on then to board member comments. Ms. Judy Vannelli?
Okay, I just have a couple things. That the Gateway meeting is Thursday at the Gateway Elementary School regarding the landscaping, and I just wanted, anybody that wanted to attend, it's at Gateway Elementary at 6:30 on the 12th. And PM, yes. Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure exactly where they're at the elementary school, but I know some, there's a lot of interest, so just wanted to put that out there. Also, oh, the art walk last Friday night was cold but awesome. It's actually beautiful weather for it, just a little windy, but it was awesome, and I have to thank Dr. Santini for that because it's something that, it was larger this year than it was last year, so it was awesome. I do have a good order, so do I wait and do that after comments?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So as much as it pains me to give my board report during an action meeting in violation of our protocols, I'm sorry, there's some people I have to recognize, and I can't wait two weeks to do it. First of all, the pin I'm wearing here on my left is FHSAA 100-year celebration. The FHSAA has been, this is a 100-year anniversary of holding state championships for our kids. Speaking of which, Mariner High School played for a state championship in soccer two weeks ago, and I was amazingly impressed by the quality of play, the teamwork. The culture surrounding soccer has not always been all that impressive to me in the sense that the players are often encouraged to indulge their emotions on the field. These kids didn't play this that way. These kids were respectful, and they were small compared to the other team. And Dr. Atkins, I think you might have some discipline issues with Mr. LaRosa, because I was sitting and watching the game with him, and he got up to leave to get something to eat, and the other team scored. And he immediately came back and sat down and said, "I gave them bad energy. I have to sit in this seat." Five minutes left in the game, he gets up again and leaves, and they scored again to tie the game. So I'll let you deal with him directly.
Yes.
They ended up losing by one point in double overtime. And I've not seen a group of students more just drained and devastated. You guys know I go to these state championships all the time, and I see a lot of devastated kids, but these kids were, they represented their school and their district very well. I was very, very proud, very proud of them. Also, I sent you guys pictures of the Special Olympics Unified State Basketball Championships, where Fort Myers High School came in third, and when that buzzer went off, they ran across that court, and they were beyond happy and beyond proud of themselves. I was very excited to see Dr. Butts there, supporting his students. And I have to tell you, the final game, one of the students was dribbling down the court. He hit an off-balance jumper that literally went through the net as the buzzer was going off. It was a three to win the final championship game by one point. It was crazy exciting. How it wasn't an ESPN Top 10 moment, I don't know. Wrestling state championships, I was there this past weekend. Dunbar High School, Ida Baker, Astero High School, Fort Myers High School, Mariner High School, Bonita Springs High School, South Fort Myers High School, Cypress Lake High School, all had students represented in the wrestling state championships. I've not been to any state competition where we had that many kids represented or that many schools represented, and almost every school had administration there supporting their kids. And you, I talked to you guys last year about how incredibly amazing that event is, but I need to mention two kids in particular. There was a boy named Chris from Mariner, who was the biggest, sweetest, nicest kid you'll ever meet in your entire life. He's an Eagle Scout, he's going to FGCU next year, he's got like a four-point-something GPA. He's just an outstanding human being, and he came in third, and his coaches don't know how he can wrestle because he's so nice. And wrestling is not necessarily driven by niceness. And I have to, I have to mention Jesse Martinez from Riverdale, AKA Jamar, that's his, his nickname. Did you all read that article about him in the news press? He is a two-time state champion. He comes from a family where both parents were migrant workers. Neither of his parents went to college. He won his second state championship this year, and he is going to UPenn next year, obviously not on a wrestling scholarship because Ivy Leagues don't offer wrestling scholarships, but I'm almost certain he's paying almost nothing to go there. Last year, when I saw him at the state championships, he was, he was kind of inside his head. He wasn't, he wasn't necessarily interacting all that much with his teammates, he wasn't really interactive with his coaches, he was just kind of inside his head. This year, the maturity that has taken place in that kid and the change that I've seen take place in that kid was absolutely amazing. And, you know, the award ceremonies take place really late on Saturday night, and everybody's tired, and that entire Riverdale community stayed, whether their kids were getting medals or not. That entire community stayed to watch the kids get medals, and I have to give credit to Coach Hayward, who I mentioned last year as well, for that. The program he's put together out there is really, really amazing. You guys have all done Read Across America Days, which is part of, I would say, the most fun thing, I think, that we get to do as board members. I have to mention Mr. Fun, who does esports at Dunbar. Have you heard about this new thing?
Oh, yes.
Have you guys heard about esports as a thing? First of all, Mr. Fun is a fantastic teacher. I know that firsthand. My daughter has him in a computer class, so he's a great guy, but I didn't realize who he was outside the classroom. He is, he has created an esports club at Dunbar High School with no stipend. He's got young children, he travels from Punta Gorda to and from Dunbar High School, and he stays after school with these kids to get them passionate about what he calls a sport. I don't, I don't necessarily think of it as an athletic endeavor, and my gut tells me it's not an athletic endeavor, and he's trying really hard to convince me that it should be considered an actual sport that's sanctioned by the FHSAA. And I have to say, he's making progress there because it is a recognized intercollegiate athletic sport. So kids are getting, kids are getting athletic scholarships for it at the college level. I'm not sure that we are doing the best thing for our kids by not expanding these programs and giving them the opportunity to get an intercollegiate athletic scholarship. Just a few more things. Spring concert at Bonita Springs High School was really fantastic. They did something a little bit different. If your child was in the choir, the choir sang from like 6:00 to 6:30, and then there was a five-minute break so that those parents could leave, and then the jazz band kids could come in and the jazz band parents could come in. Make sense? Instead of one long concert. But what they did with the program was they had a QR code out front. I've not seen that at any other high school. I'm thinking, Trey Davis, are you still here? I'm thinking significant savings on paper at our events to include graduations. I would prefer to receive my child's graduation, what's that called, program, two years from now via QR code than via paper, and I don't think they're super expensive to create, are they, those QR codes? So I don't know how he created it, but it's the first time I've seen it in a high school, and I was super excited by it. Daryl, no, I'm not going to say his name. I got a call from a parent who's concerned, he, his family is headed to someplace on a cruise for spring break, and he is married to a school district employee. And Dr. Atkins, he is under the impression that they will have to self-quarantine when they come home. I don't think that's the case. Reading what you sent out to employees, I think that we are directed to contact our healthcare provider?
Right.
Upon return, and then they will advise us as to whether we have to self-quarantine. Is any provision being made for employees or students who don't have access to healthcare providers upon return from spring break?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I believe you can, there, people are being encouraged to go into the, some of our convenient clinics, and then, and last-case scenario would be an emergency room. I know the hospitals are really not wanting them to do that, but they're wanting to have people, oh, contact the health department is what I'm being told. So have, there's the direction, contact.
Contact the health department.
Yes.
Okay. And are we considering the possibility of having massive staff absences if people are going on cruises or people are, like, is there a contingency plan in place in the event that occurrence?
Yes, we are continuing to monitor our student attendance as well as our staff attendance. Once it gets to a certain level, we do get recommendations in terms of school closures and so forth, so that's something that our staff is continuing to do. Right now, you know, our student and staff attendance levels appear to be relatively stable. Without a doubt, though, I definitely think we will see some changes, you know, as this starts to get more widespread. So, you know, I would again encourage people to stay in close communication with the district, check the website out, you know, talk to your school principals, and we'll continue to work on getting the information out. We do have, Dr. Spiro and his team have worked on efforts in case we do have to do that, fortunately, and so has Mr. Davis. We've got, you know, significant connectivity, so we've been able to get secure hotspots and devices so that we can continue. There are also other districts' plans that we're reviewing, like Miami Dade is also doing something similar. A lot of the things that we are doing are very similar to what some of these other districts are doing. So fortunately, with our Chromebook initiative and with our initiative relative to the hotspots, that we are able to have pretty good connectivity in the event that we would have to do some closures. And this is something that would help us even in the future when it comes to closures that you might encounter as a result of a hurricane.
Okay, so I, I'm sorry, I still have a couple more questions. So we are looking at the potential for virtual schooling in the event of a school closure? Is that what I hear you saying with connectivity or?
Connectivity, yes, where you're looking at, you know, teacher preparation of lesson plans posting on, you know, the various platforms that we currently have in the district, the supplying of hotspots to students that may not have internet or Wi-Fi access at home. So all of those things are things that staff has continued to work on just in preparation in case we get to a level where we're being advised to close.
All right, and finally, I would suspect some of the students in the room might share this concern. I know that if my daughter had to take two weeks off from school, she would lose her mind because she would be so afraid of getting behind. So if we don't have a school closure, but we have kids who have to self-quarantine, like, what supports are we providing to teachers and what guidance are we providing to students? Because teachers having to stay in touch with kids who are homesick is a lot of extra work for them. You don't have to answer that question right now, I'm just raising it as an issue, and if you want to provide us with that information later, that's fine.
We could certainly do that, but like I said, all of these things are things that our team is currently working on because, you know, the bottom line is, you know, we expect our situation here in Lee County to, you know, more cases and more situations, particularly as students and staff members are going home to spring break and taking vacations and coming and, you know, going on airlines and all of this. So, you know, I do expect... I do expect us to continue to have to deal with this situation. It's just a matter of time, you know, and so they are well aware of that and are making plans in that event.
I will say that if my three boys had to stay home for two weeks, self-quarantine, they would have a party. Patty, not so much. I, I have to mention the Jason Sill podcast one more time. I don't know if you all have had a chance to watch that or listen to that, but his interaction with Adam Wright is amazing. Jason is Adam's boss and Adam was interviewing Jason. And it's clear, the support and the team environment that exists in, in that department. And, you know, he was very complimentary of Adam Wright for all the preparation he puts into those podcasts. And I'm really excited for the film festival after the long discussion he gave. I've just got three more quick things. Chris Walsh, you are amazing. You are, you're, you're probably the, the student with the most personality I have seen at this dais in the three and a half years I've sat at this dais. And I thoroughly enjoy you at Student Advisory and I just, I really think you're a fantastic kid. And I think that your future is bright and truly your options are unlimited. So keep working hard and stick with it and you're going places, kid.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Two more things. Does it make sense to email a link to the briefing meeting to our high school kids? You, you mentioned it, but sometimes those things are hard to find. So don't answer now, just something to think about. And finally, I have been to the Astero Club in, I'm sorry, the Rotary Club of Astero two weeks in a row. Last week I presented, this week Dr. Martin presented, and one of the members told a story about a school board somewhere in the United States. I, I don't know exactly where, where the superintendent fell ill quickly and seriously. He was seriously ill. And he was hospitalized and the board decided to adopt a resolution to wish him a speedy recovery and wish him well. And that resolution passed five to four.
That's funny.
Thought we could use a little levity at the table. So I wanted, that really was a story that was told at Rotary today. Those are my comments. Ms. Fisher, thank you.
Madam-
That was almost as good as the chest bump. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I spoke with Ms. Giovanni just to find out what the nature of her other item was to make sure that it, it would be fit under Good of the Order.
Yes.
It's my understanding that it may involve a formal business and generally Good of the Order does not involve business or motions. So I think, it's my opinion, I think it would be more appropriate for it to be dealt with here as opposed to during Good of the Order.
Okay, then.
Or at least, at least prior to when you move to Go to the Order.
Okay. Then we'll finish up and come back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
That's great.
Thank you. Mrs., Ms. Jordan?
Okay. I'm rather boring, so let's see. Okay, well, my list, we, myself and Ms. Morgan, we attended the South Fort Myers. It was the Elementary Honor Choir. And there was probably about 100, 150 students there, I presume, but they were just all in sync. They were just fabulous. And I'm just a big fan of the arts. I also attended the Art Walk and this, where the students took over the downtown area with the music, dance, and art. And that in itself is just a fabulous thing for us to, to have going on. The JROTC Gala, I attended that this weekend. I believe he said there were about 750 students that attended. And just watching those kids and their manners and just the way that they present themselves was really a sight to see. Really proud of them. We had our Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee met last night and we had a presentation by, again, some fabulous kids, Heights Elementary students on diversity. They came in, we had two groups of kids, one, a group of three, and then a group of two that spoke about homelessness and not having enough food. And these kids were charged with going out and finding a project that they felt was dear and near to their heart and also coming up with a community partner where they actually raised money for these different organizations. So not only did they have a presentation, they then presented these different organizations with a check. So when you're talking about five-year, grade five, and these kids doing that, it's, it's just amazing. But the committee was really impressed by the kids and asked them to come and teach all of their kids. We had Mr. Brian Magnin. He was there also doing a presentation of Code of Conduct. They spoke about how impressed they were meeting the students and seeing them. We had a trip out to South Fort Myers High, which Mr. Mathis, Matthews was a great host. And now they're wanting to possibly recommend visiting other schools to see what is going on in the public schools. I attended the League of Women Voters. Ms. Michelle Hilton was there and they spoke about housing, attainable housing. And I know that was a conversation that we had. So it's not just us that's speaking about it here at the board. The community in itself is also speaking about it. Just two more things. Southwest Florida Fair, we had a bunch of our schools were there. They had great displays and we actually have one out here. And I believe this one is, it's Mariners, it is out here in the lobby. So you really need to take a look at it because these are all done by students. And we had 47-plus schools that participated. So it is really a good thing. The Community Forum will be taking place this, along with the, NAACP and partnerships with them. And that's going to be held at the Kerry Robinson Center on 3/12 at 6:30. And we hope for everybody to be here. I believe the Housing Authority is going to be participating in that. Is that correct, Dr. Atkins? In that one, right?
I'm not sure about that.
I believe they're partnering with that as well. And then the children that sang today, "The Million Dreams." They always give us hope. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Ms.-
Are you ready?
Mrs. Gittens?
Okay. First off, on the virus discussion that you were having a moment ago, that was one of my main concerns as well with the connectivity with the students that don't have it. And so I don't know, I guess it was when I was sitting in traffic and couldn't do anything else. And what came to mind way out of the box is if we had to do that, what about a partnership with the TV stations that at certain times they could do a running post of lessons for students that don't have connectivity but have TV? So, just a thought. I wanted to congratulate Ms. Pina. I believe she's gone. Oh, that's you. Yes. Okay. I, I really want to talk about your comment about clearly defined communication. And I agree with you that if we look at how things are dispatched to the community and maybe our communication process and, and kind of having a handle on it before it gets to, to point Z, that it may work easier for us in the future. Chris, you did an excellent job. I told you that already. You told me no. I said yes. A few of the community things that I'm rushing through because I have something I want to present. Community prayer service at Dunbar, were you going to mention that at all? Okay. Very moving service that honored 14 people in the Dunbar community in Fort Myers that had lost their lives. And it was very moving and especially in the end, I realized that one of the girls was a student that I had taught. And I went up and spoke to the parents and she was just overwhelmed the fact that, you know, I had been one of her daughter's teachers. So if you get an opportunity next year, they do it every year, hopefully it's much shorter because there's less people involved. Black History, Back to Africa at James Stevens with Ms. Hood and her students was excellent. And I promise the people that, at the schools I'm mentioning, I will show pictures later. Read Across America, I was at Mirror Lakes, the first-grade class, and read a Dr. Seuss book I had never read about birds finding an egg and it turned out being an alligator egg. And they raised it until it fell off into the water. It was fascinating. And then G Weaver Hibbs, Dr. Seuss, I read again. And, okay, next, the Insurance Task Force. We had a meeting. I'm going to give the highlights and I'll give more details to you guys in an email. One thing, during the election period this year, they, the staff had to fix 2,800 election errors. And as of the meeting last week, there were only 75 left. So they are working doggedly and hats off to the Insurance and Benefits Department. 96.4% of our employees elected to participate in healthcare this year. Two things that everybody needs to be aware of, the CVS Minute Clinic, and it's only for minor illnesses, but you can, one of the neat things about it, you can pull it up online. There are three locations and it will tell you what the wait time is. You put in your zip code, it tells you where the closest one is and the wait time. And you can put your name in or make an appointment. So you're not sitting there with everybody else coughing and carrying on. Teladoc is fascinating. It is a, just what it says. It's Teladocter, but it's online. You make an appointment to meet with a, a doctor, a psychologist or whatever. And you have so many appointments and, and it's all online, which is good because let's say someone's really stressed out in their home, they have children, they can do this online in the evening at home. I also learned the miracle food is broccoli. Okay? Make sure you cook it or it's gassy. Lay off on sugar and, and also laying off on fat. So Insurance Task Force meeting is very informative. I had mentioned before, and I guess, you know, you can bring this up to me, I, I am still concerned about the administrative moves between ALBA and River Hall and, and Mirror Lakes and all that's going on with that. So we really need to address that since staff has already been told that there's moves. The Census, our major, major deal is on the 14th, which is this Saturday out in Lehigh. We have three block parties going on simultaneously from 11 to 3. One is at Jack's on Joel, one is at Mugs and Jugs on Lee Boulevard. And we actually finally got it all together. We're closing down a street off of Leonard between Joe and 24th. It's one block and we've got our, Eastlake County ROTC is going to be there, Goodwill, Lehigh Community Service, the Sheriff's Department, and several, several other communities that are going to be there. We will have free food, a raffle for either $50 or $25, a free raffle. People can sign up for jobs. They are still, they have extended the job period for the Census, $18 an hour, and they can sign up there. And the important thing is starting the 12th, I think it's Thursday, from the 12th to the 20th is really, really important. You will be getting a notification, and they just let us know today that it's a letter that will come from the Census Bureau. So it's not a card anymore, which I'm glad of that because a little card saying resident will get thrown out. But this will be a letter. And we will have, I know on our website, we put it today, showing you what that letter is going to say and what it looks like. So just let people know that. When you, the, signing up for the Census basically on your phone or on a computer, there's 12 different languages and all of that. So come out for the free food and the raffles and everything on Saturday at one of our locations. Okay, two more things. One, I would, I want to read this so I can go into the, the minutes of the records. And based on the comments and things of several of the people that spoke this evening, I want to read this.
It's time for it.
Board member comments for Gwyneth Gittens' March 10th action meeting. "I am embarrassed and appalled at the rhetoric by board members at our last few meetings. We have an obligation to the public who placed us in our positions to do business in a fair and equitable way. Board member behavior since 2/25/20 has been defamatory and insulting to our choice to other board members and violated board protocols. Many community members and constituents have shared their concern, disappointment, and disbelief at the aggressive and discriminatory tactics used to discuss and describe a professional candidate of our choice, to name a few of the attempts to systemically diminish public and professional confidence and professional, inner professional attorney Dupree Bruno. One, discrediting, discrediting her abilities as an accomplished lawyer because she does not have an education law certification when in fact the job description clearly states certified, eligible for certification, or as the board sees fit. And all the other attorneys for the district and the current board attorneys at this time, including the chief of, Chief Counsel, do not have that certification. Number two, false accusations to humiliate the candidate by stating a plethora of grammatical errors which were not shared with the board because they seemingly did not exist. Also assuming that there are erroneous errors which preclude the candidate from performing her duties and thus she could be quote, "an embarrassment to the district," unquote. Number three, systemic attempt to discriminate against the candidate by requesting writing samples and tax returns when in fact that was not a part of the original board-approved process or is it, or is it legal? Salary discussions, and I quote, Dr. Pruitt, we discuss salary, that we look at the last three years of tax returns because we certainly don't want to pay more than that. Number four, when the systemic attacks were unsuccessful in changing board members' decisions, the attempt was made to undermine and sabotage a major consensus, a majority consensus. The human resources industry as a whole uses behavioral interviewing. We were told in our interview instructions that if you took, put a one or a two or a four or five were used for scoring, you should, there should be comments. One board member gave ones and twos and in fact a zero with no comment on a number that was, the median score was a four. Because of the flawed, quote, because of the flawed process, we do not necessarily know if we have the best candidate. This board has no appetite to return to the process. So, and then we went on to Plan B. Number five, selectively and systemically choosing non-professional references for Attorney Bueno- Bruno, I'm sorry, compared to interviewing all professional references for a candidate that is not even selected by the board to move forward. Assumptions that other board members were incompetent because they did not share the same beliefs. The pronoun used "benefits" as if he were a full-time employee. And the quote was, and I know the use of pronouns, pronouns is an issue. Maybe you should get with Attorney Bruno to decide which pronoun you would like to be referred by. Number eight, we are not in a position where we're luring a board attorney or assistant board attorney away from any other district, suggesting that the only persons qualified are coming from another district. We've been placed in a posture of board discrimination and more. And the systemic attacks need to stop. My final comment is about the ending of Black History Month. It's over, but as I said in an article, that my dream is not to have to say the first, although I am humbled by being a first. As I stood in the district atrium during the Black History Month celebration and the sounds and the lights of the song, "Lift Every Voice and Sing," was being sung. And as I stood there, listening to the sounds flow through the hallway and reaching the light from the windows, I, I was teared up. I actually was. Because I thought about how far we have come and I was tearful over so how, how far we still have to go. And that's my comments. Please pass this down to the secretary.
Okay. Yeah, I have something that's supposed to be a video, a short video that's supposed to be on. But we can, we can come, let me do my, I'll do my first thing while you're getting that done. Shame on you, Jason. Shame on you, Jason. No, kidding, you know that. I am the Board Liaison to the Curriculum Advisory Committee, and as was mentioned yesterday, we have done a deep dive into ESOL, and the fact that our district is growing by leaps and bounds with, especially with many monolingual students. And we had great presentations about a week or so ago, from the Principal at Tice, and also from Benita Springs Elementary. Both schools have huge ELL populations, and so I decided to go to both of those schools, and I realized how many other similarities there were between these two schools, besides the fact that both of them are doing an incredible job in dealing with the ESOL population, and in, of course, doing this in different ways, but being very thorough. Did you know? I didn't know, but some of you, longtime Fort Myers or Lee County people, might know that both of these schools are on the National Historic Register. Yeah, see, I've only lived here 15 years, so I don't know these things. And the Benita School was, both the Benita School and the Tice School were built in the 1920s. So it was fascinating to me to, you know, of course, both schools have been greatly expanded, but to see the interior and, you know, some of the architectural things that were remnants of the past, so that was really interesting. Both of them are relatively small elementary schools. I think Benita has fewer than 600 students, and Tice has, I think she said 609 students or something like that. So they're similar in size, both are Title I schools, as I said, with high ELL populations, and also, of course, family income in their areas are low, so we have a lot of families that are low-income families. Both schools are very community-oriented, and I love seeing that, especially since I'm such a big fan of our proximity schools coming along and moving to getting the community support. And this is where there's unfortunately one difference between the schools, and that is, the Benita School has been, they're just, they have so many groups, just because of the nature of the Benita Springs community, because there are huge pockets of poverty, but there are also areas with great wealth. So it's kind of, they're on either end of the spectrum. And being that they are right on the line with Collier County, I was surprised that some of the people that have participated actually live in Collier County, some of them choose to go to the Rotary in Benita Springs, and the, and I forget the name, Weeze, Harry Chapin, who can help me? The name of the food bank in Collier?
Sorry.
I don't remember, but it's the equivalent of the Harry Chapin, and they're the ones that actually bring food trucks, and I was there on a Wednesday, and they have, you know, great need with the families, but they bring in this food, and, sorry, Harry Chapin, but I was told that the quality of the food is a little bit higher, but then again, Collier County, my daughter used to live in Collier County before she moved, and the fact of the matter is, because of the wealth in Collier, the Humane Society, it's where I adopted my cat 10 years ago, they get more money there for their abandoned and rescue dogs and cats than we do for our children, and it just has to do with the demographics. So I'm very, very happy for Benita Springs Elementary, and it just really underscores, since Tice is in East County, and I know Ms. Gittens has dealt with this, and I've mentioned it numerous times, and some of the other board members have, that equity doesn't exist among the schools, and so I feel like we need to do a better job in providing the equity lapse, or, I'm not sure quite how to describe it, but sometimes there are groups of people that just need more, and it's not unfair, it's just the situation. So, I planned this census thing before I realized, my friend Patricia Sala was gonna be here, she and I have seen a lot of each other in recent months at the various census things, but if you would roll the very short PSA.
The 2020 census is so crucial for the future of education, because the future is in education. It's a struggle to keep music in my school, and I feel like I have to fight for it every year. These kids need it so much in their life. Math and English are important, no doubt, but music and the arts are one of those things that really speaks to your soul, and it teaches my students how to express themselves in a different way. Even if it's just looking at each other in the eyes and singing a song to one another, you have this experience and this connection, and at the end of the day, that's what life is all about. What I want for them is to understand that they do have a voice in the world, and we get to tell the story. We are the ones that stand up and say, we need to be heard. I would tell everyone to do the census, because their voice matters. Historically underserved populations, they're the ones most likely not to respond, but oftentimes, they're the ones that need the most help. The 2020 census will affect everyone, it'll affect your daily life. We're talking bus lines, we're talking transportation, representatives, educational funding, all of these things can change based on the population of an area. If you wanna have a voice, if you wanna make a mark, what a better way to do it than to actually, you know, do your part and be counted.
Okay, and finally, on the census, there's a picture that I just received this morning, and, yeah, I saw, I mean, there've been things that have changed from week to week on the information that I get from the census, right?
Yes.
Yes, so this just came to me today, and I'm not sure, I wanted it shown, just so people would know what is going to come in the mail. And as I said, I got it this morning. I'll say the next thing while you're pulling that, while you're pulling, or you found it, okay.
I have this for this one, you sent another one.
It's probably the envelope, there were two. There was the letter and the envelope.
This is the one that's better, yeah.
Mrs. Vaughn, excuse me, Mrs. Vaughn, I'm just gonna ask your indulgence, and Mrs. Morgan's, I'd like to let Chris Walsh have his say, it is 9 o'clock, and it is a school night.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, okay, yeah, just, everybody just leave it on the screen, and everybody can take a look, this is what is gonna come in the mail, and I only have two quick things after that, but go ahead. I yield.
Chris Walsh, thank you for being here as our student representative, and do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Yes. Sorry, Ms. Morgan.
No problem at all, you need, I'm gonna talk about sleep in a minute, you need your sleep.
National Sleep Awareness Month.
So, you may have heard earlier, people talking about the schedule changes for high school students to a seven-period, not a block schedule. So they're saying it'll, first of all, it'll take away time from after-school activities. Nobody said they're gonna add on time, because there's gonna be seven periods a day. They're probably gonna redistribute the time, which would roughly be 51 minutes per period, I calculated that when I was, that's what I was doing earlier. And, so, that, and also, you'd be seeing a daily meeting, there would be really, maybe more time than each time that you got each, on a two-day block schedule, 'cause there, in my school, we have a 10-period, two-block schedule, so I have five classes a day. Two of those classes, I have daily, math and language arts, which therefore, I get more time in those classes, even though I have different block schedules. With the schedule, it'll just be that all of them are daily, instead of having it be eight periods on a block schedule. So, all the people who think, the people who think that it will take away time, or it'll cut into time, that's not really true, it's just gonna be redistributed. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Pretty good analysis.
I make a motion that he's hired. Can we go out of protocol and clap for him, 'cause he's awesome?
Yes. See you, Chris, at the School Board Student Advisory Meeting tomorrow night?
Yes.
Okay, so, we gotta give you a dad break, and let him take you home now. Take your papers with you.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, you were awesome.
The future's bright.
Okay, can I? Okay, so, the census, what you should be getting in the mail, starting this week, and for the next week or so, this is what it's gonna look like, and you will have a census ID, and you're gonna need it to complete the census. I wanted to comment on National Sleep Awareness Week. I've noticed, noted this for years, even before I was on the school board, and as a former high school teacher who started first period at 7:05, I've always had to chuckle just a little bit on that sleep awareness, and I'm hoping that as we move to our new schedule, whatever that might be, as we add some time to our day, I'm really, really hoping that we don't go back, I've been, we've been promised it won't start before 7:00, but I've started going, yeah, I've started going through some of the districts, and so far, I think Collier's pretty close to where we start, but so far, I'm seeing a lot of schools, high schools starting at 7:20, 7:30. We're the earliest that I have found thus far, and I found an article that Miami Dade is actually, and I don't know if they've come to an agreement yet, they are actually looking at making their high school start times later. And so I haven't finished my little research on this, but as many of you know, it is, teenagers need their sleep just as much, or more, than other kids in school, and yet, they're the ones that wake up the earliest, get to school, and so many studies show that that early time of the day is not their best thinking time. And so, again, because our motivation for, not only, you know, for adding the time, but our whole motivation is for student achievement, and so, I'm really hoping that as we look at this, we consider a later start time. I was going to say something similar to what Ms. Gittens said, but she said it so eloquently, I'm just gonna say ditto. And the final thing, and, boy, we're running really late tonight, so I see Kevin Daly, I hope he watches this. Kevin Daly, I take up your challenge, and I challenge everybody on the board, and I challenge all of our upper-level district administrators to go out and do the subbing. Now, I know that you went out when Taup and Spout went up to Tallahassee, but what I'm going to say is, I think it should be spontaneously going to a middle school, or high school, and I think it needs to be challenging classes, and not cherry-picked classes, and not classes that are, that you're there for a photo op. Okay? I challenge you to that, I would've done it, but nobody invited me to be a sub, or I would've gone, perhaps they heard about my hard...
Classroom management.
Hard blank way of teaching at a stereo, I don't know, but anyway, that's all I have to say tonight.
Point of information, Madam Chair, are we even allowed to do that legally without passing a background check? Are we allowed to supervise a classroom?
I still have my teaching certification.
I've never been certified as a teacher, so I'm wondering if that's something I'd even be permitted to do by state law.
I'll have to speak with the superintendent, but I'm not sure certification is required for substitutes.
Certification, but background check, making sure that I'm not, you know, that's...
Yeah, you just had, I mean, as I understand it, I know that Dr. Pruitt does have a mechanism, if board members wanted to do that, they could certainly do that. And I do wanna say that, in response to what Ms. Vaughn said, these weren't cherry-picked, because these were teachers that went to the Tallahassee trip.
Right, right, but...
Well, the...
You knew where you were going, I'm saying, walk in the school, who's not showing up today, I'll take that class.
Well, as I said, I mean, the implication that you're making is that these were cherry-picked for photo ops, which honestly, I disagree with, and I don't like the implication. This was happening, in my case, it happened to be a teacher that was going to Tallahassee, it was not the easiest class, in fact, the principal said it was, you know, one of the more challenging for that particular grade level, because of the diversity that was in there. I know that, you know, Dr. Pruitt going into a kindergarten classroom was not an easy thing to do, we went where there were openings.
She teen-taught that, though. Didn't you? I thought you and, no?
So, you know, like I said, it's, those are just, I just, as I said, I felt I needed to correct that, because you were implying something that, in my opinion, the symbol wasn't correct.
Okay, well, I'm, sorry for that implication, but I still think if you go in, walk in the school, and who's absent today, I'll take the class, it's going to be a slightly different outcome, especially if it's a teacher that hasn't prepared a lesson plan, because he or she got the flu, or worse. So, anyway, I still challenge it, and I'm, board members and upper-tier administrators, I just saw Dr. Spiro nod his head, so I guess he's first in line.
Well, and as I've indicated to the board, you know, we, during, we did have some discussion about upper-level management going into some of these positions in support of something, and testing efforts, because that's where we have a shortage of substitutes. I know that, I just got a text from indicating that during Teacher Appreciation Week, there may be efforts to do that as well, so...
That sounds great.
You know, so I, you know, like I said, I think that these, we went out there and covered real absences.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Morgan, thank you for your patience.
I have no comments.
You have no comments? Okay. All right, I will be very brief. I attended a couple of Healthy Lee meetings, Girls Coordinating Council grant, and the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Subcommittee, and I just wanted to do a shout-out, because people from Lee Health and other people in the community who have been working on our mental health plan and our community partnerships, were over-complimentary that Lori Brooks has been the driving force and largely responsible for the progress that's been made, community-wide, and they said she's like their right-hand man, so I thought that was great. Along with that, I was at a United Way Funding Meeting this morning, and one of... Along with that, I was at a United Way funding meeting this morning, and one of the team members came up to me and said, "I just wanted to tell you that I visited five schools." And she said, "I was looking to see where I'm gonna put my child next year." And she said, "I was so impressed with the professionalism, the caring, the work." She said, "I would put my child in any one of those schools that I saw." So, I thought, you know, it's, maybe it's good to hear some good news, and I wanted to share that with everyone, especially all of our hard-working staff members who are responsible for that kind of public relations. So, thank you to all of our teachers and administrators and support staff who are working very hard to make our schools a great place. And as I said before, looking at our kids tonight, I have no doubt that good things are happening in our schools every day. We had the community forum at Cape Coral High School on March the 2nd. It was pretty well-attended, there were sixty-some-odd people there, and a lot of people did show up, and what was not on the agenda was the schedule changes, but Mr. Simmons bravely took, took that on, and he shared a lot of the information with the students, and they, again, were very articulate, very respectful, and it was a pleasure to be with them. Our DAC meeting is on March 25th, and we're gonna be talking a little bit about restorative practices, and Mrs. Morgan, I wanted to thank you for doing the DAC executive while I was at the community forum. I, I saw, oh, the art walk, of course, was great, and Reading Across America, I had an opportunity to be in kindergarten through third grade at four different schools in the West Zone, and I had, that was the highlight of my week, I had the most fun. So, next time I sub, I don't wanna go to middle school, I'll go back to elementary school. And, let me see, oh, teacher salaries. So, I think it was last Sunday's news press, and there were some feature stories about teachers working more jobs and not having affordable or attainable housing. So, I think we really need to continue to look at what we can do to pay our teachers more, not only to keep them doing the job that they're doing, but to make sure that they can adequately do that job without having to run to another nighttime job. And, and I know the community largely supports that, and so, I'm still advocating for us to look at the mileage like Mr. Fox and Mr. Daly had suggested. And thank you, board members, for a good meeting, lengthy, but good. And now, I'm gonna go back to Ms. Giavinelli, so that she can bring her item up while we're still in meeting before good of the order.
I did have a couple of things. We forgot, Debbie, we forgot to talk about the pep rally at Southwood Myers High with Dallas and Sammy Watkins, how that was an awesome experience, but probably my favorite part of it is actually the principal Matthews and how he interacts and with his school and his students. He definitely excels in relationships with his students, and so, I can't, if you can attend one of his graduations, you'd, you'd understand it. He knows what each student is doing by name, what they're, where they're gonna go to school at, or what they're doing on in their, in their life, so I can't compliment him enough, actually. And what a wonderful, that school was awesome. So, and it is awesome, so I have to commend him for what he does at that school.
And I had the privilege of being there also, and I was standing next to Dr. Spiro, and I said, "I wish NBC was here," because the stu, in all of that excitement, the students were so respectful and so well-behaved.
They were.
Yes, it's a well-oiled machine over there.
One of the other things I had was for Dr. Atkins, I just wanna make sure that, that the schools and the busters are being provided with the CDC-approved cleaning products that, that the CDC has recommended, and be assured of that, because I'm hearing a little different information out there, and I wanna make sure that that's being provided to all the bus drivers and, and so forth. I know other, I, when I Googled that information a little bit, I noticed that other districts and communities are paying a company to come in and disinfect their buses, and so, I just wanna make sure that we're being proactive instead of reactive.
So, to answer your question, that is my understanding. I know that we had another board member that asked, I think it was Mrs. Vaughn, asked a similar question, and we are going to be providing that information to board members, including the product that we use.
Great.
So, you'll, you'll have that information.
So, also, and then on another note, I received several phone calls just today from, regarding yesterday's meeting, and I, I think that the, the whole attorney hiring, our board attorney has been drawn out long enough, and I would just like to make a motion, and my motion is to hire Kathy Bruno Dupre as our board attorney, subject to mutually-agreed upon contract between Ms. Dupre Bruno and the board. And that's my motion.
My second.
Second.
Second, discussion.
Madam Chair, just so the public is aware, pursuant to your board policies, since there's a motion and a second, that was not on the agenda, the, the procedure under the policy is for the board to have the discussion. Once the board discussion is over, it is open for the public to comment solely on this motion, not on anything other than this motion, and then, once the close of public comment, if any, it would be for the board to take their vote.
So, I'll repeat my, my motion, too. The motion is to hire Kathy Dupre Bruno as our board attorney, subject to a mutually-agreed upon contract between Mrs. Dupre Bruno and the board.
Second from Mrs. Vaughn, discussion, Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, I think that, under most circumstances, a board would have, especially when you have a vote, five people in favor of something and two people not, that in most cases, a board would respect the wishes of the five, and even though it was a consensus vote. And yet, we have, as a board, received a barrage of emails and comments, and frankly, to me, it came to a head yesterday with some of the, some of the comments that, that were made, that frankly embarrassed me. It embarrassed me as a board member that one of my colleagues would suggest that a well-renowned attorney would need to be subjected to a writing sample. It also bothered, it appalled me, actually, that the suggestion was made when we know very, very specifically what it means when we say market rate. That market rate isn't three years of somebody's tax returns, and see, well, are they gonna get a raise, or they, they should, that person should be paid what he or she was making the past three years, and be happy with it. That's how it came across, it embarrassed me. And, and I, I think that it is appropriate at this time to cement, yes, we are putting forth this in a real vote, and so, I'm very much in favor of this vote, and of course, I will be sticking to my original consensus vote for Mrs. Dupre, Dupre Bruno.
Ms. Jordan.
I am going to, what I have to say is that I definitely, in the end, we need to be following what we keep sitting here saying that we're not following, that people have problems with the way that this all took place. So, we need to follow it all the way through, even though I will be voting for Ms. Dupre Bruno, Ms. Kathy, and when it comes to, back to us with everything filled out. But for us to, to change the protocol now, we would have to do that for everybody else that comes through. So, I think we need to go through the proper procedures, as we stated, that this is how we're gonna do it, we're not changing anything mid-course, but now we're sitting here asking to do that, and then let it come back to us after she has seen it, after we have seen it, and then go through the motions, so it's all done properly.
Ms. Gittens.
The only comment I have is that, yes, we did say we would bring it before us, but the motion on the floor is to continue with that process, but to officially have a vote of the fact that we are going to hire Ms. Bruno, Attorney Bruno, not that it's just a consensus. So, I believe that's what the motion is about at this point, and I would be definitely supporting that.
Yes, Ms. Jordan.
I appreciate what you're saying, but are we, how do we do this for one person and not do this for every single person that comes before us?
We only have two. It's just her.
Okay. But still, to me, it's just, it's, we need to go through the right channels and the proper channels. So, it's already moving, we know what they're doing, and we already said we want it, her to receive this in a timely manner, so that way she has the opportunity to look it over, put her numbers or whatever needs to go, she already knows how we feel, and then it will come back before us.
And that's not changing that, it's just solidifying what we said in a formal action meeting with a vote. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Mrs. Vaughn?
I, I just wanted to respond and reiterate what I said earlier, that under normal circumstances, under circumstances that I would expect for us as a board that respects each other's opinions, this wouldn't be necessary. But I have seen the board members that voted the opposite way of two of the people on the board insulted, and I've, I've heard things that never should be said out loud for our chosen candidate. So, so this is just special, because I wanna see this nastiness stop.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. We've, we've had discussion, I, I would appreciate not rehashing everything that we already talked about the other night. And I also am not comfortable doing this right now, because we have a process that we are, is in progress, and so, although I support the hiring of Ms. Bruno, I am not prepared to make that vote tonight, and it's twenty minutes after nine, and I think that we'll take the vote, yes.
Well, I didn't get to have a second comment, but I, we have a community that's very upset because of the, of our meeting yesterday, and I would, we're gonna continue to have several attorneys come until we make that vote, and I don't see that vote happening anytime soon. So, my thought process is to, to assure the community that this is going to take place, and not be circumvented with numerous emails and long workshops regarding this conversation, that we can work out the details of the contract in the meantime, and get the vote over with, because that was actually questioned as well, and in, in, in one of the emails was the vote not actually being taken. So, that's, that actually came about because of one of the emails, and that's the reason why I brought it forward, because I want to assure the community that we are continuing to move forward with our process, and alls we need to now, to do now, is to get the details of that contract worked out between Mrs. Bruno and us.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
I just wanna clarify the record, I have never said that I would not support Ms. Bruno as board attorney. All I have done is challenged process, all I have done is say that I viewed the situation differently than my peers, but I was, I welcomed their decision, and I would support that And, and I just think that what I have said at the board table has been misunderstood, and I wanted to clarify that. I was part of the group, we all agreed, and directed you and the board attorney to proceed with contract negotiations with Ms. Bruno.
Yeah, and, and I'm prepared to follow that. So, we have a motion and a second, we need to...
You need to, pursuant to your policy, open it up to if there's any public comment. Again, it has to be specifically limited to this motion, and then, if, once public comment closes, then you can have a vote on the motion.
Okay, then, I will open up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this issue? Yes, ma'am.
No. I don't think so.
Do you want to, I mean, you, you've already submitted your information? If you can just state your name, and for the record, we can utilize the same information. And you'll actually have three minutes, because it looks like there's less than twenty people.
In the room.
My name is Melanie Penya. So, I've been listening to a lot of conversation over this, and first, Ms. Kathy, I don't know if you're in here, but I am so sorry that you had to go through everything you had to go through. As a student, I hope that the future is brighter, and that we never have something like this happen to anyone. And secondly, I know it was brought up, like, this is procedure, how can we do this for this person but not everyone else? And my question is, well, how can you discriminate against one person and not everyone else? I think because this is such a special circumstance, that special actions need to be taken. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Yes, right here on the left side, and then Jamie.
Hi again, my name is Kathy Horn, I live in Astero. I don't think as quickly on my feet as I used to, so pardon me for taking, for stumbling a bit, but I did not watch the workshop yesterday, and so, I'll, what I'm hearing tonight are veiled insinuations and accusations, and clearly, I don't have an entire story behind it. But I also wanna say, in the kindest way possible, because I try to keep things upbeat when I do things, but grow up. I mean, every last one of you, for the last year and a half that we've been coming here, there have been unfound, well, I don't know unfounded, I don't, I don't, we don't know what goes beyond, behind whatever is very public. But, I mean, all of you have been accusing somebody else of, of bad intentions and ulterior motives. And when we, you know, again, I say, I didn't see that particular meeting yesterday, but I've seen enough here to say, you know, the students that have come here and presented themselves before you have acted with a lot more professionalism than many of you. And it's, it's hard to watch. I can imagine it's hard to be in the middle of it. You guys have it ten times worse than we do. But all of you are adults, all of you ought to have the ability to come to a meeting with an open heart and see that the other person has an idea that maybe you disagree with, but you don't have to resort to, you know, below-the-belt shots, you know? And I have no idea really what you're talking about, which process you're following at this point, but all of you are people who are trying to do the best, that you think. And it, you don't achieve anything as a team by fighting with each other, you know? You look for a goal, you, the thing you want is the best attorney, and Ms. Bruno may be the best attorney, and somebody else may be the best attorney. But if you can set aside your predetermined ideas about each other, and just look for the things that you all wanna see in this person you're gonna hire, you know, I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Michael. Ms. Michael.
And I'm speaking as an individual. And I sat here yesterday, and I -- my heart hurt for Ms. Bruno. It just hurt. And I go back to a year ago where another person who was highly qualified was put forth by the superintendent and was torn apart in public. And my feelings were yesterday, oh, here we go again, just like Mr. Franklin. Ms. Bruno's going to say, if this is how they're going to act and how they're going to treat me, why should I work for the Lee County School District? You guys cut each other off. I congratulate Ms. Fisher for stopping that. Take turns talking. Try to be nice. Try to say nice things. The process should be the same for everybody, whether it's support personnel, teachers, everybody. There's a process. And the district tries to be really fair in that process, using rubrics, et cetera. You all have a different opinion. My question to the attorney is, could this have been done in an executive meeting with just you guys to hash this out? No, it can't. Okay. Because this is sad to have somebody just torn apart here in a public meeting. It's not nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Any other comments? Okay, then.
Dr. Chapman.
Dr. Chapman.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I didn't plan to say anything. I'm Shirley Chapman, and I think most of the board members know me. I'm just appalled at what I'm hearing. But I think you've heard enough tonight from people that spoke on her behalf to know that she's going to be fine in the position if you give her an opportunity. And I know what it's like to have to go through things in this district because I have 30-some years in this district. So please, just go ahead and call for the vote. I'm trying to stay here until the end. I'm trying not to get up and leave. I think this must be the latest meeting we've had in a long time. So please, get on with the vote. Thank you.
I'll call for the vote at this time. All those in favor of hiring Ms. Bruno prior to the negotiated contract being reviewed by all of us?
I just want to -- I want to make one statement in case it does pass. There's -- you aren't hiring her. It's, as the motion, as I understand it, it is, you are moving to hire subject to a mutually agreed-upon contract. So there is no -- I just want to make sure that there's no confusion. There would be no guarantee of employment. So I just want to make sure that that, as I understand the motion, that that's clear.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask him a question? As you just said that, so basically, we would just be solidifying or legalizing the consensus that was reached two weeks ago.
That's correct. The contract would still, in order for you to have a mutually agreed-upon contract, the board can only act as a whole in a public meeting by vote. So the contract will need to come back before you. This, the motion, as I understand it, solidifies the consensus vote from the other day.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. I appreciate that. Okay, then we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of hiring Ms. Bruno subject --
It's not hiring, though, right? It's solidifying.
I can say it again if you want me to.
I think he just said it.
A motion to hire Kathy Bruno Dupre as our Board Attorney, subject to mutually agreed-upon contract between Mrs. Dupre Bruno and board.
Yes, subject to the agreement, yes.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Then.
Is it -- can I have another question for the attorney? Is it fair to say that we, as individual board members, should not be interacting directly with Ms. Bruno until the contract is negotiated? Is that fair?
I guess that's really up to the board. As of right now, you had given directive to staff to negotiate with her, but you hadn't given any directives to yourselves to either speak with her or not speak with her. If you were to give those directives, I would probably caution the board. She is, because she is a resident, so she may have, you know, she may want to petition the board for certain things. So if you were to put any sort of limiting thing on yourself, I would caution the board to limit it only to the retention, if that was the will of the board. But that way, she can still, you know, petition you all if she needs to for, as a residential purposes.
Meaning, like, a taxpayer, community member?
Yeah, I mean, if she doesn't agree with the schedule and she wants to talk to you guys about the schedule, and just to use that as an example from tonight, that way she's not limited in, you know, she wouldn't be limited in communicating her opinions to you on those things.
Thank you. I was just recommending that we do not do that because we live here in this community and we see each other. So we are not going to not speak to you. So, yeah, we'll make sure of that. Is that a satisfactory answer to your question? Thank you.
I'm just, like, thank you for your clarification of our expectations in your email earlier today, Ms. Gittens. We collectively would be negotiating the contract. I just don't think seven of us should be negotiating the contract individually with her. That is my concern. That's really what I was speaking.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, the directives were for the board to give me their comments, and I would incorporate those along with staff. And then, you know, and Chairman Fisher is the liaison pursuant to the prior board directive. So we would work still under those same, under that same process. So, sorry, I didn't, I misunderstood that.
Okay, fine. Thank you, then. Mr. Quick, do you have any comments this evening?
Nope, nothing. Just a reminder to get, you know, the comments to me on the agreement by, I think you had set by end of the day on Thursday. And then I will turn it around with staff. And, you know, I will set aside, you know, Friday morning to hop on that, so.
Thank you. Superintendent Atkins.
Just real quick, a couple of things. One is related to, there's a request by a board member to look at the gap analysis that Lee County is doing. So I've asked staff to do that. I think --
That's what I was going to ask.
What? Lee County's what?
Yeah, Lee County is, the commissioners have conducted a gap analysis, and they, that draft report, or the report is out there for comment. And so
Yeah, okay.
I've asked staff to take a look at that, I think, and given some specific actions relative to that report. For example, I think there's a really good section on housing. There's another good section on staffing. There's some information about transportation, which is important for us to provide input. So just wanted to know, wanted you to know that was taking place.
Thank you.
And then, speaking of transportation, just something interesting. Transportation profiles, according to 1718 data, Miami-Dade has about, has 47, 772 students eligible. Same year, we have 52,486. So we actually transport more than Miami-Dade on a daily basis. And that's it. I just think when we talk about, excuse me, we talk about times, one of the things that's a challenge for our school district is making sure that we are able to transport all those students to school on time. One of the, some of the proposals that are, that we have looked at, and Ms. Vaughn had mentioned, 715, 720 for some of the districts. And that is one of the things that I know Dr. Savage has looked at in terms of a little bit later time. The challenge that you have is always the turnaround of the buses. So the last thing I want to do is put you in a position where the buses aren't able to get themselves turned around. I do recall a time when I first came down here to the district office when board meetings did go to 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, and it had to do with late buses. So we, this is the one thing that I have told Mr. Lloyd that's non-negotiable, is on-time arrival. And so regardless of what our, what our mode is or what our schedule is, we need to make sure that we have students arriving on time. The other thing about Miami-Dade, and I haven't looked at this number, but in our district, but I think we have, like, 850 buses, I think, but we have 700, a little over 750 routes. They've got, on theirs, over 1,000 total buses. So, and I do know that if you look at cost per mile, our cost per mile number is much better than their cost per mile. It's probably where, you know, our routes are a little bit more efficient. They transport 13% eligible. We do about 56%. So it's something that we don't think about. We actually have a larger transportation system than Dade does when you're talking about students. Don't talk about that very often, but that's something that I think is important for our public to know. So whenever you're making decisions relative to schedules, that's something that you definitely have to consider is, is do you have, I can tell you right off the bat that to find the workforce to do 1,000 buses would, you know, would be a challenge. I doubt they have 1,000 routes, but, because I'm sure there's replacement buses in there. But still, it would be difficult for us to come up with more drivers than we currently do. We really work hard to get what we have. So anyway, these are things that we have to consider when we're looking at schedules. That's it for my comments tonight.
Ms. Fisher? Thank you very much.
Can I just ask one question in relationship to getting the information I sent in the email today? Can we get a response on that about the contracts and everything from the other?
Yes, we have already spoken to staff about that. And so, yes, that is, all the ones that were provided via email, yours was, you provided some requests, I think Ms. Vaughn did, I know Mrs. Morgan did, and staff's working on all of those requests. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The next scheduled meetings of the board, on Monday, March 23rd, there'll be
Wait, wait, I got one more. Just kidding. You're pushing it tonight.
On Monday, March 23rd, there'll be a special board meeting at 1:00 p.m., followed by a board workshop at 2:00 p.m. On Tuesday, March 24th, there'll be a board briefing meeting at 1:00 p.m., as well as an action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business, come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Giavennelli, seconded by Mrs. Gittens. Please record your vote.
I think so.
Thank you to the members of our audience who hung in there tonight and safe home.